Okay ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the special meeting of the Township Vote and Planning Board to order. Okay, can we roll call please?
No, not those.
Mr. Brody? Dr. Di Benedetto?
Here.
Mr. D'elia?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Good? Ms. Close?
Here.
Mr. Levy? Mr. Siano?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Chairman Burley?
Here.
May the red flag reflect that Mr. Brody is presently walking in.
A salute to the flag please.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands this one nation, under God, indivisible, that is the basis of all.
Welcome, Mr. Brody.
Oh, so good to be here.
Great to see you as well. The notice requirements of the open public meeting law for this meeting have been satisfied. A copy of the notice having been sent to the Esberry Park Press and the Coaster and filed in the office of the Township Clerk on July 19th, 2019. There are emergency exits through the auditorium doors and two exits at the rear of the room. We have a no smoking policy. There's also the board policy that no new testimony will be taken after 11:00 PM. All meetings will be video and audiotaped and shown on the Township Vote and Planning's Community Cable Channel, Channel 22 on Verizon FiOS, and Channel 77 on Cable Vision. All cell phones must be turned off. If you need to make a call, please step outside and make your call outside the meeting room.
Is there anything that we can do about these floodlights?
Oh, good, thank you.
We're working on it.
Uh, thank you very much, sir. I'm going to announce that the board is not going to begin the commentary section of this meeting until at least 7:30 because there was an issue with the notice to the public which indicated that this hearing might take place at the town hall. So we're gonna give those folks who went to the town hall and there's somebody there waiting for them to direct them to come here, give them an opportunity to get here so they don't miss any part of portion of this meeting.
And there's also notice posted over at the municipal building as well.
So, could somebody please make a motion to go into executive session?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to talk about personnel issues. I'll, uh, second motion.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Brody?
Yes.
Dr. Di Benedetto?
Yes.
Mr. D'elia?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Ms. Close?
Yes.
Mr. Siano?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
Chairman Burley?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna take a brief recess and go into executive session and another portion of the high school. We will be back in approximately a half an hour. Thank you for your patience. Ladies and gentlemen, I apologize for the rather lengthy delay, but we're back now so we can start up on the commentary. Mr. Brown, the board attorney, will go over some of the guide rules before we proceed.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for those of you here who were not here at 7 o'clock when Mr. Burley opened the meeting, we were delaying the comment section because there was a challenge with the notice by the applicant in terms of the location. It said it was gonna be over at the township meeting. So what had been said was that we were going to delay it for due process reasons, if you will, to make sure that anybody who happened, if anybody happened to go over to the township meeting, uh, location, that they would be directed over here. So in fact, as it turns out, we've allotted almost an hour for people to go from there over here if there was anybody. Ms. Krimko, do you have any comments on that particular notice issue?
Yeah, I would, and thank you, Jennifer Krimko, on behalf of the applicant. And Mr. Brown, you're correct, there was a typographical error in our notice. The form that was used was the original form. We had not noticed ever before for the high school. If you remember, all the special meetings were adjourned without further notice and it was announced at the prior meeting, so unfortunately, it was inadvertent. My associate was at town hall with the zoning officer, monitoring to make sure he and the zoning officer could direct anybody here, and I'm advised as of 7:50 not a single person arrived at the municipal complex.
At 7:50, you said?
Uh, I'm sorry, at, yeah, about 7:50, about 7:45.
Okay.
No one had arrived. Um, also, before you go into public, before you go into public comment and reference or two, just a bookkeeping or a cleanup, if you remember, um, we submitted a few additional sets of plans. I'm not offering any testimony with regard to them. They were purely submitted in, as a result of a tech review meeting. They were submitted in advance of the hearing. So I'd like to introduce as A-85 Sheets 3 through 7 of the preliminary major final site plan prepared by Mazor Consulting dated 6/27/18 revised through 8/23/19 consisting of five sheets. And what that did, that was our engineers just addressing some of the comments based on Mr. Fitzgerald's comments at the prior meeting. And then A-86 Color rendered site views of the site from Highway 35 and Deal Road prepared by MMA Architects consisting of four sheets. Uh, I remember at the last hearing, the board members and both the board engineer had indicated, what is this actually going to look like? We were asked to submit these color rendered views, which we did. So, alright.
Okay. The chairman has asked me to make preliminary comments. Now, I am sure that at least most of you were here at the last hearing on August 1st. I don't assume that you would remember exactly what I said in terms of the process, and it's possible that some of you weren't here. So for both of those reasons, I wanted to highlight the process. So as you both, as you all see here, we have two microphones. We are going to handle the comments just as we did last time. So if you would please queue up, if you will, if you want to speak, Mr. Burley will recognize going back and forth or in a logical manner of people to come up. So I was also asked last time to have this hearing put in context, so this is like a quasi judicial matter. It's not like a council meeting. There are limitations on what the board can hear. And with that in mind, we highlighted that anybody who comes up, as they did last time, will have the opportunity to say anything that they want. But once they say that, then there will be no other opportunity to come back. So number 16, members of the public, as I reviewed over the weekend, who made those comments, so those people are done with their comments. Also, we had said last time that if you stand up and you find that one of your neighbors has already said what you would like to say, then you can say that you agree. And in fact, as I looked at the transcript, some people did say that. They said, "I agree with so-and-so, I agree with so-and-so." And that helps the board out, so you've now been able to articulate your thoughts without being redundant. The idea of this is to assist the board, to allow the public the opportunity to bring up relevant facts. Now, um, to summarize generally what I perceived to be the process last week, I'm sorry, last month on August 1st, there were very little objections by the applicant's attorney and very few comments by the chair to stop people from talking. And that was a refreshing exercise, and a lot of things were said. However, it's imperative that the board members up here be clear that when the opportunity comes to consider, you are only allowed to consider relevant testimony. Because if you consider irrelevant testimony, then that's not proper based on due process, fairness, rights of either the objectors on one side or the applicant on the other. And just because people might be wondering, you know, what does that mean? I'll just highlight a few comments that I noted that came out. That, you know, they may be very applicable if you go to a council meeting, because you're looking for remedy. But this board cannot consider it because it's not, it's not part of the jurisdiction. It's impermissible. So some of the, you know, very fine general comments were, you should be concerned about global warming, the process is undemocratic, the council should be considered such that if there was a denial, they would in fact consider condemnation. I'm trying to paraphrase what I read in the transcript. The property would look depressing if it's not all woodland as it is now, and matters of press coverage resulting in there being no more volumes of people who've come out this time compared to for the last subsequent application about a dozen years ago. And also, for example, that there were already enough gas stations in the area. While they may be compelling social issues, they can't be considered by the board because it would be something that would be overturned. But you will hear, you know, before the end of the evening, members of the board and members of the public, you know, how the comments intermesh with what can be discussed for a final determination.
Mr. Chairman, anything else you want me to?
I think you've about covered it. It's just, uh, I guess the people to be organized and I guess you can start to come up.
Sure.
Will you start the commentary then? Mr.?
Hallen.
Hallen, right? You were sitting in that chair. Do you have some type of a display you're, you wanna render? You have some type of a display that you wanna render for the audience? Okay, and this is part of your commentary, right, sir? Okay.
Alright, so, Charlie, would you raise your right hand? Promise to tell the truth, full truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got it. And I know we've heard from you before, but what's your address, please?
Right, should you give him your mic? I think you need a microphone.
Yeah, we need a microphone. Okay. And Mr. Hallen? We have a court reporter here who, unlike most everybody else who doesn't know you personally, could you spell your name, please?
H.J.W.L.E.T.T.
Is that okay? Ma'am? Alright, there you go.
Is this okay?
It's fine.
I do have a bit of a presentation, and I look for your indulgence in that, to a certain extent. And in the interest of full disclosure, the applicant and I had a casual conversation after the last meeting, and he graciously offered to buy me breakfast at the turning point after this process is completed. I am inclined to accept, as long as the closest turning point is still the one in Long Beach. I want to thank the members of the board for your service. We tend to forget you are unpaid volunteers. And while I do not envy your job in this particular case, I'm certain you will realize, you realize how important it is. We are at a crossroad in our town, both literally at Route 35 and Deal Road and figuratively for the future of our town. You have a chance to make a real difference. This proposed development will change the town forever, and I am confident you will not take this responsibility lightly. I also want to thank the board, and Ms. Krimko, and the applicant's experts for their patience and many courtesies they have shown me. It has been noted in many and many times in these meetings that the approval of this application will stop a pending lawsuit. While that may be true, I sincerely hope that you judge this matter on its own merits without consideration for the disposition of that lawsuit. This application must stand on its own, or it will be forever tainted. Moreover, we residents may be forced to subsidize a project that does not warrant approval. Subsidies come in many forms, some quantifiable and some not so much, but that does not make them less real. To be blunt, I do not want to subsidize this development by, among other things, letting Poplar Brook be polluted with runoff from the develop, by letting Playa Park be damaged by excess water, or by changing my lifestyle by avoiding Deal Road, especially the library, because of increased traffic. I want to share some of the things I learned during this process in the unlikely event that you do not have all this information already. I hope you find it useful. Amy, can you hand out the?
Well, if, is Mr. Hallen moving anything into evidence or making a presentation? I believe the applicant's entitled to have the opportunity to review it and confirm its authenticity and make sure that there's no objection to it.
I haven't seen anything from Mr. Hallen.
I, I gave it to Amy, I didn't know what the process was. Forgive me. These are some points from-
Well, Mr. Hallen could take a look at, is this what you're presenting here?
Yes, it is. It's things from the presentation. There's some terms that I learned along the way, and I wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page.
So is that one copy?
No, I have a copy for everybody, and I have a copy here.
Alright, if you can just give it to me, because we'll have to see if it's something that can be disputed.
So it appears to me that there's photocopies from websites and some definitions from unidentified locations. I'm not sure what you're propounding these for are proofs, but do you have an expert that's coming to testify?
No, I do not.
So, I, I'm not sure that it's appropriate for a resident to submit copies of websites into proofs without having the ability to question the veracity of not only the website, but who prepared it, where the information came from, and the ability, just like I can't submit a report without the opportunity to have that person cross-examine, so.
This is what I would suggest. I understand what council is saying. It's a typical comment by an applicant's attorney. I would suggest, Charlie, you make your presentation based on what you have on the screen and how you're articulated, and then at the end, you can move it for consideration as Krimko at that time can either agree with you or-
Right, certainly, I have no objection to Mr. Hallen expressing his personal opinion. I do have an objection with him presenting anything from a website or any other dot unverified or unsubstantiated document as any kind of expert information or testimony.
Mr. Chair, what's your feeling?
I'm feeling to sustain Ms. Krimko's position. There's, unless Mr. Hallen can, I guess substantiate the information that he has gotten from these websites, and I don't know how he would go about doing that at this point.
So he suggests him proceed?
Yeah, yes, he should proceed, but the, if, I haven't seen this, but if it's just information from websites, then I think she has a very viable objection to that.
I, I think I understand, but I'm not really sure where I should go with this now. I mean, the, the very first things are just basic definitions that have been used in these proceedings before. And these are things that I, I learned along the way, and I was hoping that the, the board members, if they haven't already seen these things, like the definition of evapotranspiration.
So you're going to include them in your presentation right now, right?
That is correct.
When you're reading?
Oh, okay.
So why don't you just read? Just read it all? Right? Is that okay? You said you could-
If he wants to provide what his layperson opinion is on the definition of evapotranspiration, then by all means, he's entitled to.
Okay.
Proceed, sir.
So these are some useful terms that I, I learned along the way, and this is, these are, this is the first handout that I gave you. There's three terminologies here. Evapotranspiration, it's a process by which water is transferred from the land to the atmosphere by evaporation from the soil. As a reference point to that, a mature oak can absorb and transpire 4,000 gallons of water a year. That's water that does not have to be handled by our stormwater management system. An acre foot of water, which I got from Mr. Langen's presentations, is, is a one acre surface, an acre of surface area to a depth of one foot. That's about 43,560 cubic feet. And as a reference point to that, a building, common building lot in my neighborhood where I live in Oakhurst is 100 by 100, or about 10,000 square foot. An acre foot of water would cover more than four of these lots with a foot of water. And rat run is a term that came up frequently, and that's motors using any escape route to avoid traffic. I had never heard that term before, so I was going to use it in my presentation, and this is the way I was gonna use it. This next slide has to do with the design storms and how much rain actually falls in one of these storms. It's used many times in the, in the engineer's presentation. For instance, a two-year storm would give us about three and a half inches of rain, but the important part here is not how much rain we get from any one of these storms, a two, 10, 5, or 200-year storm, is it when they can occur. People typically have the misconception that, say, a two-year storm will happen only every two years. But the reality is that if you get a two-year storm today, you could have one again tomorrow. Same thing with that.
If I can interrupt, I need to place another objection on the record. I apologize, but-
Okay, go right ahead.
Again, this is a proceeding. We anticipate there will be litigation. I am representing the applicant here. I'm obliged to advocate on, on the applicant's behalf. The public portion of this comment is not for the public to come up and present slideshows giving you an edification on drainage, an edification on definitions, or background information. It's their opportunity to offer a comment as it relates to the application. They had ample opportunity to question the witnesses, to attempt to challenge any of the conclusions that were made, or to discredit any of the experts that were presented. I would respectfully ask that the board direct Mr. Hallen, any future of the potential objectors and/or commenters, to limit their comments to their opinion as to the issues that were testified and with regard to the application. Otherwise, this is gonna go on for another 11 minutes.
This is true. Mr. Hallen, could you make it somewhat concise if you try? I'd appreciate that.
I would try, yes. I would make a comment that there are certain things that we have not been able to ask anything of the experts with, because the experts were not made available to us. As an example, whoever wrote the environmental impact study, although I thought they were gonna come to be available for questioning, never did.
So, so again, the applicant's entitled to present the case, and the board makes the decision based on the case presented. If Mr. Hallen has comment, if Mr. Hallen wants to offer an objection or disagreement with the environmental impact statement, he's welcome to. It, it's not a matter of the availability of the witnesses, it's a matter of the pertinence of the comments that are being offered.
Well, Mr. Hallen's just indicating that he had the ability to read the environmental impact statement, but never had the ability to question anybody about it. So we understand that, so you can proceed.
Well, I'm gonna have to fly through some of these things. I was trying to give background to the things I'm aware of and talking about how this is gonna affect my specific neighborhood. This is, this is where I live. I mean, I've been a resident of this town for, for 37 years, and I think, I know there's other people that have been here much longer, but 37 years does give me from some perspective. And I'll, I'll say right from the beginning that I'm not against all development, I'm not against any particular development. I am particularly development that will fill a genuine need and promote the general welfare of the town. I'm all for that. We just need to be thoughtful and not exacerbate the current problems. And I believe there are some current problems in this, in, in this town that are affecting the quality of life. And while there's many things to be grateful for, we have to be careful in what we do.
So could you touch upon some of the problems in this town that will be exacerbated by this development, in your mind, sir?
Let me, let me go a little bit farther. I have, I have three slides, and these are the three things I wanted to address specifically. Number one, I want to talk about water. Number two, about pollution. And number three, about safety. And these are three of the slides I have. I'm trying to say, don't put more water into a system we already know failed. And a lot of the information I have is showing how the current system has failed and will fail in the future, particularly if the, the problem with water is exacerbated more by the fact that this, this development, as testified to by a civil engineer, is going to put more water into Poplar Brook. And to that end, I'm, I'm trying, I'm going to try and draw a picture of how the system works now and how to address my concerns about what will happen in the future.
If I, if I may, Mr. Chair, just going back to what you'd indicated, actually, Mr. Brown indicated at the beginning of the hearing. When there's a permitted development, and it doesn't need variance relief with regards to the intensity of development or the amount of stormwater runoff that it may or may not create, again, you have to look within the jurisdiction of the board. If the concern was that development would cause a unnecessary impact to the infrastructure that exists, and the infrastructure's currently failing, then the place to argue that would be at the time of zoning. But when you have a property that is zoned for a certain use and a certain level of development, it's not within the planning board's jurisdiction to look at the, the global picture of the impact of infrastructure overall by development generally.
Mr. Hallen? Ms. Krimko's correct. Ms. Krimko's correct. We, we can't really look at that, but if you want to touch upon your concerns briefly and move from one to the next, we'd love to hear about that.
I'll take that.
I've also, I've also lived in a town for quite a while myself, and I'm pretty familiar with the, the history of Poplar Brook.
Right.
Maybe not as familiar as you are, but I know some things that happened there, so. I do understand what you're saying, trying to convey, and I'm sure a lot of the board members do as well.
Well, my contention is that the, the problem with water is, really boils down to a problem of safety. And I don't know, is the problem of safety within the purview of this board?
For those of you who were last time, again, this is, this is not a council meeting, and if you were in court, you wouldn't be clapping. Clapping is not something that this board appreciates, and it shouldn't happen. It's not a popularity contest, and so members, please, please be respectful of the proceedings. In terms of safety, I, I will generally refer to what our professionals have indicated in terms of relevant safety. So safety was particularly talked about in Mr. Fitzgerald's reports, about safety dealing with the urban jug handle, again, within the site, the safety for pedestrians and vehicular traffic. In terms of drainage, my understanding, subject to Mr. Fitzgerald maybe clarifying, is that it deals with inflow-outflow, if you will, and it deals with compliance with the state regulations, which are subject of DEP, which Mr. Fitzgerald's talked about extensively. So in terms of the precise word safety, I don't believe that's in the lexicon. But again, the, the jurisdiction of this board is somewhat limited, and respect, if you refer to what has been referred to over time by Mr. Higgins and Mr. Fitzgerald, those are the salient issues, okay?
And the applicant has stipulated that we're going to comply with the municipal, as well as the state stormwater management regulations. Once we've agreed to do that, this board and the township doesn't have authority to require anything additional on top of that, although the applicant has agreed to go a step above what the stormwater management requirements are and prepare designs to a higher level design flood, as recommended by the board engineer.
That's correct, and let's just say, if the board were to pass it, then the resolution would be very precise that any process would mandate full compliance with those DEP standards, and based on the higher standards, as stipulated to and is per Mr. Fitzgerald's report. And Mr. Fitzgerald would be actively involved in monitoring that to assure the interests of the municipality. Is that right, Mr. Fitzgerald, or not?
That's correct, Mr. Brown.
Okay.
Also, if I may, a question, but if I, if I may, it's a, I think it's kind of unfortunate at least some members of the audience who raised this issue early. There was representations on the record, which I supported, whereby the applicant testified that the DEP would be reviewing their stormwater management plan. And the question was asked, because people had reviewed the file, nobody could find in writing, or was there, where was it in writing that the DEP would do this? So I will give it to you so that you can follow up or verify what I'm saying, or, you know, write a letter to the DEP, do whatever. The permit numbers- The permit numbers are almost all the same, 1337-16-0007, 1 FHA, 180002, and the same numbers, 180001. There are the flood hazard individual permit and the flood hazard verification issued for the project. They were issued by DEP on March 8, 2019. They expire March 7, 2024. However, there was a condition, and that's what I want to read, because I think it will answer your question. The department has determined that this project meets the requirements of the stormwater management rules at NJAC 7:8. Any future expansion or alteration of the approved stormwater management system, that's the one reviewed in March, approved in March, which would affect water quality, increase rate or volume of stormwater leaving the site, affect the infiltration capacity on the site, or the approved low-impact site design shall be reviewed and approved by the Department for Urban Construction. This includes any proposed changes to the discharge characteristics of any basin, the construction of new inlets or pipes that tie into the stormwater network, and/or the replacement of existing inlets or pipes for structures of different capacity. So it's in writing that they did review it once, and they'll have to do a subsequent review once the plan is finalized and is satisfactory to the town.
And will you be monitoring that?
Yes, I will. If you'll notice, any of my reports, at the very end, there's a list of all of the permits that are required, outside agency permits, and this, we correspond constantly with Amy Stewart, Ward Secretary, as the process, if an application is approved, as the process moves toward permits, and no permits are released until all of those conditions are satisfied.
And just for the benefit of members of the public who aren't here all the time, I hope none of you are here all the time, but for major applications along the lines of what Mr. Fitzgerald said, there's always the condition that all relevant approvals must be received from the appropriate state or other agencies, and if they're not approved, there is no permit granted. And in this case, I reference back to some of the comments. There were comments about historic artifacts and the like. That would be particularly inserted as a prerequisite of approval. Same thing with all the individual permits that were referred to in Mr. Fitzgerald's report, and some of which he's just alluded to now.
Correct, and those items all are within the state jurisdiction, and we've agreed to comply with them, so while someone may have an opinion as to that issue, I don't think it's necessarily pertinent for them to go on at length with regard to a presentation to this board, since the jurisdiction ultimately lies in and outside agency.
That's a proper recitation of the law.
Mr. Hallett?
I'm a simple man. I need an easier answer than that. Is there an issue of safety within the purview of this board? Because the question I was going to ask is directly connected to questioning I made of the expert witness and the answers I got from the expert witness and a member of your staff. That's one of the questions I had, that I'm concerned about. Am I allowed to ask that question?
There's a comment session right now, so you can provide comments.
Okay. Then can I comment on the fact that I talked, or I asked a question of Mr., I'm sorry, I forget the name.
Zaccario?
Traffic, right?
Yeah.
Zaccario, about how someone could safely walk from the bank to get lunch at Chick-fil-A.
Yeah, you can provide your comments on that safety factor, absolutely.
And he started to answer me, saying, I asked him, would they have to cut through a parking lot? I'm not sure of my exact phraseology, but something like that. And he started to answer that as, yes. And Mr. Fitzgerald interjected, wait a second, he was looking at the plans for the urban jug handle, and he said, well, you actually can make it by sidewalk, although that would be a circuitous route. And I, my intent was to follow up on that, and how logical, I don't even have a term, requiring people to take a circuitous route, when it defies logic that they would do it, can be an appropriate response to the general welfare and safety of the public.
That's a very valid comment.
And I'm talking about my personal experience in this matter. I mean, I was a Little League coach for 10 years, and during that time, I had, it was actually a great experience in the town. There were a lot of parents, a lot. There were a number of parents who would drop their children off at Coldfield, so they could watch their siblings play, and hang around with their friends, and get out of their hair, and it was a safe place to be. There was a snack stand and everything. My question, my follow-up to that, would how can somebody, parents go away, how can we expect two normal kids saying, I'm going to make my day at Chick-fil-A, from walking up or riding their bike up to this site, and on the urban jug handle, with discontinued sidewalks and no shelter on the road? How can we say these young people are going to be safe? And how can they get up there and get back? I've looked extensively at the urban jug handle, and to me, looking at what it says, some of it just basically defies logic. And I don't know if I'm allowed to say anything about that. Am I, or am I not?
Yes.
Okay. Well, the urban jug handle, the way it's laid out, by the way, as a reference point, the urban jug handle over at BJ's is longer than this urban jug handle, only has five entry and exit points in it. There's only one entry or exit point that really has any traffic, that's the BJ's itself, and that's over 400 feet away from Route 35. This plan has the two most heavily trafficked businesses there, right next to each other, across from each other, at the entrance from Route 35 north into the urban jug handle. For the Wawa, it's less than 100 feet away from Route 35, and across the street, the Chick-fil-A, it's less than 200 feet. And anybody coming north on Route 35 that wants to get into the Chick-fil-A will have to go into the urban jug handle and make a left in front of northbound traffic that's on the one-lane portion of the urban jug handle. Anything that happens there has been a backup traffic, and here, I might have two young people, one on a bike and one walking right foot, to get up to the Chick-fil-A to make his day. How can we say that this is, in the general welfare, how can we say that this is a safe administration of development? And it's not just Coldfield. People drop kids off at the libraries, and they're going to walk through and try and get to the Chick-fil-A. Is that an appropriate question to ask? Is that something I can bring up or not? It's fine. Okay? I'm sort of out of order now. Oh, that's the wrong permanent. I'm out of order with my slides. I think I have to skip most of my slides. I'm a little nonplussed about what I can do. I'm sorry. I don't see, I'm surprised that safety of people who live downstream is not the purview of this board, because it's clear that after years and years of erosion and chronic flooding, as denoted by the Army Corps of Engineers and many others, has caused severe damage in this town. And if the project engineer has testified that they're going to put more water into Poplar Brook, how can that not be the purview of the board? I'm looking at the fact that this is costing us real money. You go to Brookside Avenue, and where Poplar Brook is, it was down Brookside Avenue, chronic flooding over the years. There are seven properties that have been bought out by either Blue Waters or whatever you want to call it, Green Adams', and those properties cost $2.3 million to buy. They are now part of, I guess, the park system of Ocean Township, and it'd insult the injury, we'd lose $48,000 a year in real estate tax, and that's gone forever.
Mr. Chair, I just, I need to place an objection on the record. With respect to Mr. Hallett, if he wants to make a comment to the board that he believes that this will cause more flooding, then he's welcome to make that comment. We've offered testimony that it won't. We presented expert engineer. The state has reviewed it, as well as the board engineer. Testimony with offering substantiated facts about costs of purchases and effect on taxes...
Those are all in that public record. I mean, I got them off the OPRS.
So if it's a comment with regard to, he believes this will cause damage downstream, and the board should take that into consideration, he can say that?
Thank you. I said that.
Okay. I know you said that.
These are things that are going, I really apologize for being...
No, Mr. Hallett, you know how polite and how polite you've been, and how wonderful you've been throughout this proceeding, and I'm asking...
Go ahead, go ahead, nobody's listening to that.
I'm asking you to please, I'm sure the board welcomes your comments as with regard to this application, as to what you think is going to occur. I'm not looking to stop that. I'm just looking to keep it on task as to what the board is considering, and keeping it relevant to this application, not development generally.
Okay, well, what I think is going to happen is we're going to get one of these larger storms, and in the current infrastructure that we have, which has not changed at all since Sandy, which the problem pre-existed since Sandy, and we are in a much more vulnerable position than we were before Sandy, because of all the loss of trees, all the continued development, all the weekend tree removal that happens so they don't have to get permit type of thing, and the loss of hundreds of tons of biomass from the town is a real problem. And since the infrastructure is not going to be fixed, you're not going to get anything from the Army Corps of Engineers, the dam, which is the railroad between Roosevelt and Grant Avenue with J is, the railroad is a dam, it's got two storm sewers underneath it, they're never going to be increased. We might be able to increase the ones at Whale Pond or on Monmouth Road, but those will never be increased. And the Army Corps of Engineers already pretty much said that they can't find the dollar cost benefit to come in and improve the rest of it, the infrastructure that they've already described as inadequate. If that's testimony or an opinion, whatever it is, I'll take what I get.
Mr. Hallett, I am aware of a lot of your concerns regarding Poplar Brook, but I mean, you're, I guess you're laying it out for the rest of the people on the board...
I am.
...who may not be aware.
I'm trying to do that.
Okay, you're doing fine.
There's a, I knew a gunnerie sergeant in service, who every time he went to get something, an answer from somebody in Washington, DC, he used to say, it's like nailing jello to the wall, which is true, it's a very hard thing to do, but there is an answer to that. You go down to the store, you buy a box of jello powder form, and you nail it to the wall. The answer is, don't add water. If we have problems in town now with water, the answer is not adding more water. Am I able to show videos of what the current infrastructure entails?
I don't know what you mean by current infrastructure.
The stormwater management plan in Playa Park, and what goes under Whale Pond Road, since all of that, they're all downstream from this development.
I would have to object to that. This board's jurisdiction is solely with regard to the stormwater management being proposed on this property. It is the governing body's role to look at the infrastructure for the town, townwide, and what impacts or additions or changes need to be made.
Okay. I can accept that, that makes sense.
Ms. Krimko.
But if something is going to happen from the development, it actually creates a hazard, like the pollution of Poplar Brook, is that within the purview of it, or not?
I don't believe it is.
It is not.
But I thank you for making us aware of the fact.
Thank you for your time and attention. Sorry if I was inappropriate, any of my questions. One comment, Warren, this is probably not allowed either, the Wawa gas station is the biggest insult to the environment in this entire project, and because of Poplar Brook. I don't see how we can let this, I don't see how we can let this development pollute Poplar Brook and damage Playa Park, which is on the National Historic Registry, excuse me, New Jersey Historic Registry of Sites. It deserves to be protected. I love Playa Park. I worked at Playa Park literally thousands of times, and I have the logbooks to prove it. I see that the park is dying. It's not just from this, not just from this development. Mr. Zakaria, he didn't cause the water problem, he doesn't make it rain. Well, if he does, I'll really shut up right now, but he doesn't do that. It's not his problem, but it's a problem in town, and it's a real problem. We're going to lose the park. Playa Park is to Ocean Township what Central Park is to New York City, in my mind, and it should be treated that way. It deserves to be protected, and the test site and its historical stuff deserve to be protected. I thank you for your attention, and good luck. I will say one thing, before you think of approving this application, I'd urge you to take a walk along Poplar Brook from Route 35 all the way down to the railroad, and you see all the damage that's been done over the years, and see the potential, how much more damage it can happen, and will cause more places like Poplar Village and Brookside to occur in my neighborhood, in Holbrook, in Findern, and all those streets there. The Brook is right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallett. Gentlemen on my right, could you state your name and address?
Yes. David Krenkel, 58 Hill Lake, Point Road, Ocean Township. Want to raise my right hand?
So, Mr. Krenkel, I know you're an attorney. Are you testifying on your own as a citizen?
As a citizen.
Would you raise your right hand, please? You promised to tell the truth, all the truth, and nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it.
Yes, I do.
Please state your address.
58 Hill Lake, Point Road. Okay. I just want to thank the board. You know, I came here, I was here last time, actually, and when I was here, somebody said something that I thought was very inappropriate to the board, that the board maybe perhaps was not paying attention, or sleeping, or something like that. I was offended being out here. I've sat through several of these meetings. The board has been paying attention, and I will say, when you're sitting here and you're listening to people read their notes for, you know, five, 10 minutes at a time, I look in the audience and I see people slouching down, so it does get a little difficult to follow when people read. Having said that, I think this opportunity right here for this project, I've been in the town for about 40 years, a little bit longer, and I've seen the town develop over time. But, you know, when we have a project like this, I'm full aware, as an attorney, although I'm not testifying as an attorney, what happens with these boards, or what happens in this type of process. Mr. Zakaria came here, and I do know Mr. Zakaria, I don't have any business relationship with Mr. Zakaria at all, but he came here, he brought an idea, he brought a project to us. This project, this land, has been kicking around, as we all know, for years and years and years, and it's got scaled back and scaled back and scaled back... and years, and it's got scaled back and scaled back and scaled back and scaled back. My point here today is this, if the board is going to make a decision about this, this is the opportunity. We finally have somebody here who's in town that's got to walk into the malls and see people and go to the Little League Field and see people and answer to everybody when this gets developed. I don't think we're going to get this opportunity again. I think if it doesn't get passed, I think it's going to go down to Superior Court or Trenton. Ms. Kremko can tell me better which one it goes to, but quite frankly, I really don't think we want three judges in Trenton deciding what's best for Ocean Township, when I think we all know that this project is going to get developed, it's just a question of what's going to get approved in the end. And when I hear things and I sit here and I hear about storm water, and I hear about it being reduced above the requirements of what the state requires, I don't think we're going to see that again. I think we're going to go through the process. If it gets denied, maybe Mr. Zakaria abandons the project, but somebody else is going to come in. It may not be next year, it may be two years later, it's going to happen, and it's going to be far greater than what we see now. I think we need to seize this opportunity and really look at, excuse me? I think we need to take this opportunity and understand that we do have a project that's been scaled down, it's something that we should highly consider, because I think down the line, it is going to get approved by you, the appellate division, or Superior Court Judge, who is going to hear it. You know, when I, unfortunately, I follow Facebook and I get on Facebook and I hear these comments and I see these things, and sometimes they paint the developer out to be like, "Mr. Potter, it's a wonderful life." He's not that, I can tell you that. I've met Mr. Zakaria, I've spent some time with him, I spent six years on the board of Little League, and I can tell you, he is one generous guy and one guy that has followed up and good to his word and has helped the community. And when I hear that there are certain requirements that Mr. Fitzgerald is indicating that will need to be followed as we go through, I can tell you as a citizen, from meeting Mr. Zakaria and his word, that I believe that what he says, what he will follow through with, he will follow through with it. So I would just ask the board to consider that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Sharp, would you kindly raise your right hand? Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope God? We certainly know who you're serving.
Scott Sharp, 1403 Sunset Avenue, La Masia. And if you liked Mr. Howlett's discussion, I will have similar issues with the board and the applicant. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. It represents my opinions. The focus of a lot of mine is I listened to Mr. Brown and I listened to the applicant at our last meeting. You made it very clear to me that the criteria for approval of this is compliance with the ordinances of this township. You, we pounded on that for six-plus months, and so that is what I'm going to talk about, are my opinions of the various ordinances that I believe are non-compliant, beyond what our esteemed planner and engineer have reviewed with the applicant. So that is my approach today. May I proceed?
Please do.
And in some cases, recognizing the sensitivities of the board and the applicant, I'll probably skip over some charts and probably explain why, which is, yeah, I've got some photos in there from, that I obtained from various web locations, I'm going to skip over it, not going to discuss those types of things, so I did listen to you previously. Okay. All right. I understand this applicant wants to win this approval. I fully get that. I think the design, and by the way, I am an engineer, and I went to the University of Tulsa years ago, and Massachusetts Institute of Technology within the past 10 years. So I do have, I am not a PE, never had that much stamina to go through the pain of that testing process, but I do understand engineering processes, and I've led very large programs, I worked for the government, so I understand your bureaucracy as well as others, so I kind of get some of those aspects. But I'm going to make this, try to make this fairly quick. I understand the process, engineering changes. The applicant made good changes on jug handle to urban jug handle, revisions to storm water after he changed the site locations, but there are some other things that, in my opinion, were less understandable, they were questionable. We had limited testimony. You know, was it because we were trying to avoid public questioning? I don't know. We had, we added the bank. I heard from this board, geez, we thought we might get open space with less density, didn't happen. You know, in my opinion, you know, we submitted documents around the holidays, that limited the public's ability to even review it. That was on day one, before this came before your board. Those things just were questionable. In my opinion, there was some testimony when there was a refusal to come back to the board after a submit of a new updated document. It just, it seemed as though the testimony was tailored to avoid certain topics, that there was not a desire to allow the public to ask questions about certain topics. I get that, but, you know, it did not help me in the feeling of transparency on both sides of this. I think, you know, obviously, there's people that have been concerned about traffic. I think I will pass on by this topic. I have issues on traffic, but enough is enough. We've heard demands to approve this project, saying we're compliant. I have the same topic, the same concern about promises of you'll make the lawsuit go away. I never like coercion, it just doesn't sit well with me, and that should not be a factor. The claims of compliance, I'm going to tell you in a few places where I believe compliance is not met. Storm water, you know, you know the ordinances as well as I did, Title 21 of this, of the chapter 21 of the township ordinances, you can go look, 1564, 2140, 2303, they're all there. I agree that the applicant has said, "I promise that I'm going to build you a great storm water management system." They conceded that. Great, I hope that's the case. As an engineer, I have concerns by the fact that the design of it is all based on software, some of the designs are new. The actual performance, and this is where I get into a problem, you don't know the performance of this system until it's all built, and let's look at how, what that means. You know, once it's all built, let's look at one more chart here. Take a second. Okay. I went to the trouble of actually looking at the storm water plan, actually looking at the site plan, and you'll see, the colors don't come out here. Do we have a pointer of any sort?
Yeah, here.
That I can use?
Yeah, sure.
And I hope that this board has spent the same amount of time as I have, I doubt it, since you all work and have a real life and I don't. But, you know, whenever you actually take a look at this thing, you find, all these things in blue here, those are all underground storage units. There are bio-retention connected to a trench called a swale back here. There's an above-ground detention pond. There's a trench back here for helping. All I'm saying here is, this, and all of this equipment is all interconnected, there's pipes connecting all of it. I understand all that, but I would point out one thing, which is, for it all, this storm water system works only if all of this stuff works together. If it doesn't, and there's a problem, it's my opinion is, we will have a problem for Mr. Howlett and others in terms of flooding. It's all got to work, the maintenance system has to all be there. We'll skip that because I don't want to have to justify it. And here's, I heard the board planner and the engineer both stating in terms of the 2% grade, 2303 has that requirement. They say it's not compliant. The problem I have is, I believe I heard on this board, a question was asked about how much fill is going in on this property, and I think I heard 3, 3.5 foot, although I do admit that it was on the cut, it was a very quick look-up by some of the major engineers. My opinion is, it's closer to 5 to 7 feet of fill. That's a lot of fill, and I'll show you where I believe it is encountered. The drawing at the top came right off of the site plans. If you look along this line right here, there's a dotted line in there that says the elevation is at about 48 feet. All right? Down below, we see where the hotel is going, it's in the same location. Down below where the, where the hotel will go, it runs between 54 to 56 feet. I do the math and say that's a rise in elevation of roughly 7 feet. And, by the way, you also, now you're going to build a retaining wall along here of block, I believe. I don't know how big it is or deep it is, I didn't find that information, but this is a non-trivial increase in grade, and my problem with the engineer from the township is that the comment was, "Oh, this is normal." I don't think it's that normal. I think there should be a very careful evaluation of this because it is non-compliant and it is substantial. So the summary of all this is, I'll skip over most of this, but I want to make sure that you understand that for the good of the township, so that you stay compliant with 1564, 2140, and 2303, that this predicted storm water performance is only known after the land is completely cleared. You can't do this thing without clearing all of the land. After the excavation is completed and all the fill is brought in, after all the storm water retention systems are built and interconnected, the pipes and drains, after the buildings are constructed, after the storm sewers and utilities go in, after the site is paved, then if we get some rain, then you'll know if this complex system really works. I just have doubts about the compliance with these ordinances as stated in looking at this. Also, once you do the work, the damage is permanent, there's no turning back, because you've cleared this property and you're fully committed to those promises made by the applicant. And when you clear this property, by the way, you're destroying any chance of the historic culture of the township, and those are on the state registers, and I understand that the applicant have every intention of resolving that with the DEP, God bless them, I hope they really do, because I think that maintaining some ties to our history is important, and I think the state recognizes that, which is why they brought that forward. I believe the public health, safety, and the general welfare are all compromised by this, by the non-compliance, in my opinion, of these three ordinances. Couple of last non-compliance issues. One of them is 25% open space. I think the, the 2303 has a reasonable approach to open space. It allows the applicant to include parking islands, allows plazas and functional landscape areas, pathways in the parking lots, but all of that is fair to count towards open space. My opinion is detention ponds are not functional landscape space, they should not be counted. Large areas pay for parking, they obviously are not. The townhome area, that's privately owned, hardly a public app availability or app accessibility for any open space. Yes, I'm annoyed about this one. If you look at this, at one of your previous, it's my opinion, from the previous meetings that you've held on this, there was a discussion of the Woolley Farm Artesian well, and everybody was in a flurry about that, and some of the public, you know, it was a lot where it came from. And credit to the applicant, they said, "Okay, we're going to save, we're going to seal the well and take the part on the top and put it someplace where it's saved." Well, we did that. This is Deal Road along here, and we now have a plaza that's called, that's Pavers, and right there is the well. And my only point to this is, okay, it borders a detention basin, it borders the back of a restaurant, it borders two trash bin receptacles that are picked up daily or nightly, it borders a transformer that's mounted on the ground from JCP&amp;L for power for this, the system. This is hardly meeting the expectations of a plaza for compliance with the open space criteria of the ordinance. I just have a, you know, I just think we have a better expectation of a plaza when it's trying to get credit for the open space. And just to give you a sampling, this is the property, you're well familiar with that. This shows, this is the wetlands buffer up here, and if we indeed have 25% open space, we should see an equivalent area of this spread over this property. I have not seen that confirmation that. It could be there, I just couldn't find it, therefore, my opinion is, we have a compliance issue with 2303. And the last topic I will bring is ordinance again, 2303. There's a requirement there which I was a little surprised that the engineer and the planner did not bring up in their review, or I missed it in their write-up. And that had to do with, there's a requirement that says that the customer and residential traffic on this site shall be separated from delivery traffic. So trucks are going to be on one roadway, cars and pedestrians, other where, are separated. We're going to have gasoline trucks, semi-tractor trailers, box trucks, all of these people, and garbage trucks on a frequent basis. My point of view is, with this non-compliance, is this isn't complicated, it's safety, and that's pretty simple, in my opinion, and I, I think that we should, we should insist on that compliance. So, the bottom line, you know where I'm coming from on this, I think this application should be denied for the reasons of non-compliance of ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. I have the lady on my right again.
Would you raise your right hand, please? You promised to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope God.
I will.
And you're, do you need that spell?
H-A-N-N, how do you say?
For people who haven't heard it before in the audience, could you tell us your address, please?
26... 26 Meadows Lane in West Side. I wish David Krenkel didn't just run out of the door, but I know David Krenkel, he represented the trust of my mother-in-law, and I know at the time he was a partner with attorney for the town, Mr. August. So I hope he's no biased in his presentation.
Mr. Who?
David Krenkel.
No, no, I know, but you said he was a partner with who? I want to make sure.
With Martin August, the attorney for the town. He was a partner. He was a partner. I know Lisa Krenkel, his wife, they are friends with Mr. August, personal friends. And he talked about Mr. Sakaria's generosity, and I think the town is aware, we just have the Italian festival, and we saw the display of his generosity, that he offered free parking on township property that was paid and maintained by the Ocean Township taxpayers. So I think he was referring to that. The second point that I wanted to bring is, I need to have a name of the display. The purpose of these hearings are to bring objectors and also people that genuinely are in pro or against the development. On August 1st, Pat Conti, who works for Maurice since at least 2010, gave a presentation like he is a concerned citizen. He works for Paramount Properties since 2010. I know that for a fact because I was an interview, Pat, to give him a commercial listing on a property in which I was the trustee and was a conflict of interest. So for him to come as a concerned citizen when he is on the payroll of Maurice is the same genuine, and he's taking the time and the spot.
I have to put an objection on the record. Paramount Properties is not the applicant here. An entity called Deal Land 35 LLC is the applicant here. Paramount Properties does not have an interest in this application. Number one, and number two, I believe that whoever, and I don't know who she's speaking of, but I believe that he offered his address as an Ocean Township address.
He is.
And maybe he lives in Ocean Township, and just because you work for one company or you are the brother or sister of the applicant, doesn't take away your rights to speak about an application coming before the board as a property owner. So, respect.
But there is always a question about relationships, so.
That's correct.
Who was that person, please?
Pat Conti, right there on the board. I caught that section of the, of his testimony.
C O N T E?
Yeah.
There's no conflict of interest with regard to public commenting.
No.
So, again, if it was Maurice's wife, mother, or sister, he or she are allowed to present their opinions as to.
There is no question about that. I think the young lady who's speaking is talking about being upfront about the relationships. That's all.
Again, I don't know anything about that, but I will tell you that Paramount Real Estate is not the applicant before you.
But Maurice Sakaria is part of Paramount. He owns Paramount. His family owns Paramount. And he also is a principal of Deal 35 LLC. It's the same thing. I'm Olga Hanud, and I can put Olga Hanud LLC, Olga Hanud whatever other entity, and I'm still Olga Hanud. It's my company, it's my trust, it's my LLC, it's my company. So I just got to the point that he's taking the time and the spot of a genuine objector to bring his employee who is in his payroll to talk about in favor of the development. Second, the hotel, I have a, I don't want to say a problem, but I have a concern with the hotel not having a vehicular way behind. In case there is a fire, there is a three-story high the hotel, there are windows, and if there is a fire truck with a ladder that may need to be there to aid whoever is trapped on the second or third floor, there is no vehicular traffic. And we asked the engineer, not the, I think it's the, if there is vehicular traffic, and Ms. Krenko even emphasized that there isn't. So I think that should be a concern. And even if they flip the parking to the back to allow at least fire trucks with a ladder to be able, in case of a fire, to aid to whoever is on the second or third floor. We saw in the Avalon Developments up north, who was three, that is three-story high, they have a fire and the whole building consumed. They, I saw on the news, the fire trucks with the ladders rescuing the people that they were trapped with the fire. So that is a very genuine concern of mine, that that was not well planned. But since the engineer during his cameo appearance, I was not able to question him back as to why there was no vehicular traffic behind the hotel. I'm also concerned that once the chain of this hotel, the Marriott, find out all the particulars, they may back up out of the, of the development because it's not safe for them to have, you know, to be have in that location. On the front of the hotel now, we have the historic part. So that whole area has to be protected for a long time until the archaeological study gets done. The next use is the Chick-fil-A. And I'm just going to be brief because I know another resident is going to speak on the Chick-fil-A. But that, as a commercial real estate person, I know that that is a use, that is a nuisance because of the traffic that brings. And I wanted to just bring back a comment of one of the people that was pro the project, and she said that this man is bringing first-class uses to the town. The $2 sandwich or the $5 sandwich of Chick-fil-A is not first-class. This is not a first-class use for the residents. The, I forgot to touch also a point on the hotel. Another resident said that Ocean Township doesn't have a place to celebrate a birthday or a graduation. We have two places here in town, I'm not associated with them. I have never been in those places, but we have the Renaissance with over 100 parking spots. I went to take the pictures myself of the front, the back, and also we have the English Manor. Those are two places to hold graduation parties, whatever function Ocean Township residents need. So it's not that we don't have. And also I went into the interior of the Marriott Extended Estate. There is no such a place to hold a graduation party or anything that the township residents may need. Also, there's no adequate parking. You need adequate parking if you are going to hold such a function. And we already have 64 parking spots, I think, for not even the 114-room residence of the hotel. The next use is the Twenty Point. And the Twenty Point right now is, has the patio that is facing the tanks, the storage tanks of the Wawa gas station. In all of the drawings, I've been reviewing all the drawings in town, they all labeled on the convenience store, convenience store. But the gas station, I never see labeling gas stations, and the three tanks, the storage tanks, they were never labeled. So I'm not sure if the owners of the Twenty Point are aware that their patio, I think is within 280 feet. And I have a slide that I prepared, and I wanted to give it to you, the proximity. And I'm going to bring it to you, the proximity of the vents, with the ventsing to the patio of the Twenty Point. I don't, I don't know if the owners are aware of that, that they will be lowering their brand, you know? And it's just now that we are in an age of blaming for a lawsuit, if the, we attached also in a study from Columbia University that was already presented in, just the title by the young lady on August 1st, that was done by the Midman School of Public Health, that benzine causes cancer, and it should be at least 300 feet from any place. Now, that brochure, all the drone videos were taken by me with the aid of my son and Dennis Hall, all of the photos that I have of Chick-fil-A. I personally went and took it in Hamilton Township and in another town where there is a mega Chick-fil-A. Because the one that we are going, that Maurice is trying to put, is a mega Chick-fil-A. And before I forget, trying to be conscientious about all the empty space that we have, all the bacon stores that we have up and down 35, the minute that came bacon, the, in the corner of Sunset Avenue Burger King, Maurice's office, Paramount Properties, the sign came, I text Maurice and I said, consider bringing the Chick-fil-A to that location. I think we should reuse or repurpose the bacon land, the bacon buildings, the bacon restaurants that we have, and use that as the perfect location. And I text Maurice and I said, you are going to have the traffic from Costco, from all the city's square mall, and it's already established there. In the intersection of Deal Road and Highway 35, that is not a place for a Chick-fil-A, a mega Chick-fil-A. And I don't want to give the whole detail because I know.
As I see the board members looking through this booklet, I just want to place an objection on the record that.
The board members are not looking through the booklet.
At least one of them was.
It hasn't been disputed.
The board chairman was, I saw. So what I'd like to do is object to the inclusion of this as part of the record for the board's consideration for several reasons. The first being, it sounds to me that the objection being placed and the reason for this booklet is an objection to the uses that are proposed here, the Chick-fil-A, the gas station, a hotel, and retail. All of these uses are permitted within the ordinance. All of the uses as proposed comply with the ordinance with regard to setbacks, aesthetics, and every other element that can be regulated. So there's no relevance to the fact that if there were 150 quick Chick-fil-A's in town, it's not relevant to this application because there's no regulation which indicates how many there can be. That's first. Second, there's pictures in this booklet with regard to other developments taken in Hamilton Township.
The Baker Center.
And otherwise, where it's purportedly an indication of how the ultimate construction does not match the rendition that was submitted. Again, that's not for the board's consideration here. The only thing for the board's consideration here are the plans that are before it. The number of retail locations throughout the township is not relevant. The construction of a Shafto Road Wawa is not relevant. The number of gas stations in town is not relevant as it relates to all of the permitted uses that are being proposed. And again, there's photos of local banks in here in comparison to the rendering. So I object to this.
It's not in comparison to the rendering. It is to show the town that we do not need another bank, that we have 22 banks and 17 gas stations, and we have plenty of that. And we do not need another one. That is.
As Ms. Krenko says, though, we're not here to make a judgment on that.
Correct. Yeah, but I, it's my opportunity to present my objection. And in that, as a way of presenting my objection, I made a graphic for the board to do it. She was able to present her brochure, and you indicated this is like a trial. She is the prosecutor, we are the defense. Now it's our turn to present our defense. This is the way we're presenting to you, and you are the jury, and you are the judge.
You have a very nice brochure here. However, some of the points that Ms. Krenko brought up are that what you're presenting has nothing to do with what's allowed under the ordinance. You make some very fine points, but we're not here to make a judgment on some of the points.
Okay. Now, going back to the ordinance, since we are going to go to the slices. Behind the hotel, the ordinance require a burn. If you comply with the ordinance, if the applicant comply with the ordinance, and if the engineer and the architect with that burn that is required by the ordinance, that hotel will not have place. Even the front, where Mrs. Borelli, she's going to be looking at the dumpsters from two restaurants, the ordinance require a burn. The applicant is not complying with the ordinance. She's going to have to look at the cross picking on the garbage, and I have a slide of one of the local restaurants in the morning before the trash truck comes and pick it up, is full of about turkey bunches picking up on the garbage. That is what Mrs. Borelli is going to have to look because the applicant did not comply with the ordinance. Right now, she can sit on her deck and look at the park, at those trees, those beautiful trees that another resident said that is like an abomination or something like that. Trees are a beautiful thing. They provide the oxygen. They are the lungs of our town.
Mr. Kren, I have to object to the prejudicial nature of showing a video of a garbage truck collecting garbage at another location that is not this location with the allegation that they're not doing what they're supposed to do. This board is not an enforcement agency. This board looks at what the ordinance regulations are and makes a determination with regard to compliance, how other restaurants or other.
No, that is not to show Ms. Krenko, you're mistaking. I'm not showing to, that the public see that they are not complying or they are not doing what they have to do. I'm showing that to show what Ms. Borelli is going to have to look when they put the trash containers across from her property because that is what the engineer and architect designed. Two restaurants side by side, and the trash containers, the bigger receptacles, they are facing Deal Road. That is what I'm trying to show.
Ms. Hanud, you were sworn, so let's ask your question. Were you aware on the site plan that those trash containers are enclosed by masonry trash enclosures?
Yeah, they are.
Acts of those trash enclosures are what would be facing Deal Road?
Correct.
And that there's, so the trash enclosures actually would not be visible from Deal Road?
They probably not, but you, the top, you are going to see them. Over there, they are not visible from the road. They have a barrier, they are enclosed. But when they pick them up, she hears the noise bursting in the morning. But when they pick them up, she hears the noise bursting in the morning of the trash pickers picking them up. She's gonna see the cross flying on the garbage. She's gonna smell all the decomposed food from the two restaurants. That's what I'm trying to show. Not that the town or whatever is not doing any good job picking up the garbage. You're mistaken.
Is the restaurant location in a permitted location, Ms. Hanu?
Which location?
Are the restaurants that are proposed that will have those garbage enclosures may, do they need setback variance relief?
You are not providing with the burns.
I'm asking you, this is not a colloquy. You are a witness, you offered testimony. I'm entitled to cross-examine.
Yes, correct.
So I cross-examine it. Ms. Hanu, does the, do we need a variance for the location?
No, you don't.
Do we need a location, do we need a variance to have a restaurant?
No.
Or the trash enclosure is fully compliant?
Yes.
Okay.
But you don't comply with the ordinance, which is one thing, one technicality that is seven people can vote against this development because you do not comply with the burns. The burns, and even Mr. Fitzgerald saying his letter, is not, I forgot the word that he said, for the developer to put those burns. You have to put those burns to protect. And I think Mr. Higgins says that there is not, or Mr. Fitzgerald, one of the two, that there are no burns on Route 35. There are burns on Route 35 by Wegmans. Those are considered burns. Any landscape that shields the, any landscape or any wall that prevents the view from the traffic or to enhance the, or to protect whatever is behind, that's considered a burn. And those are burns, the ones Wegmans. She should be entitled to have a burn. But if you comply with the ordinance, you're not gonna have four condominiums there because the space that takes 75 feet to put a burn, you're gonna have to shave four condominiums.
And respectfully, Mr. Chair, Ms. Hanu indicated that she believes we're not complying with the burns. It's the applicant's position that we're complying with the burns as well as landscaping, with the only exception being along Route 35. And there was testimony from your planner who drafted the ordinance that that was an oversight and it never should have been included, that burns along Route 35 are not appropriate. So I'd ask Ms. Hanu to move to our next point.
Now, I'm gonna show you a video of Poplar Brook, which is behind the development, and it studies on the computer. The healing, in the other computer.
I don't have now, that's...
Okay. Because I took a drone video and I follow Poplar Brook all the way when it goes right underneath the trucks behind the lumberyard. And there is such, it's only the pipes. There are just a certain capacity of those pipes that they run under the railroad tracks. There is no way to increase that capacity or the size of those pipes unless you...
Again, Mr. Chair, I have to place an objection. The downstream pipes and the infrastructure of the township is not within the purview of this board. This is the 11th hearing.
I sustain your objection. You're correct.
I would ask that the board chair instruct the witnesses who are offering their public testimony to please keep it relevant to what this board can consider and as to their opinions, and so everybody will have the opportunity to speak.
I'm gonna wrap it up. I have heard you many, many times saying that the obligation to the applicant is to keep it safe inside the development. But anything outside the development, the applicant is not obligated to do better or not responsible. And I know you emphasize at least a dozen times, and I think it's for a reason, because you wanna shield your client for any liability in case there is an accident. You put in the blame on this board who are going to be voting on it because you say very clear over and over, the obligation of the applicant is to make it safe inside the development, but outside the development, no. So if any pedestrian walking on Saturday with a carriage and four other children to the house of worship gets killed, then you, the blame is shifted on whoever approved because you said the inside of the development is his obligation, not the outside.
And for the record, I was merely stating the law as decided by our state Supreme Court and in no way was shifting liability from the applicant to the board or as indicating that the board has no liability because they have no jurisdiction.
The other thing that you say is that if you obtain the permit, you can go tomorrow and chop the trees, or to clear cut the trees. That is not correct. First of all, I start with Mr. Koszak in Trenton. I met with him for two hours. I know that there is an historic site. The location, I know exactly where it's located. And you will not be able to do that. Physically, you can get three guys and go and bulldoze that. But then Maurice will have to lawyer up because we are gonna have historic organizations, a lot of people after him for drawing and cut trees when he doesn't own the land, when there is historic sites that still work to be done. Finally, I have a little problem with Mr. Fitzgerald making the presentation on behalf of the applicant. On August 1st, the engineer, was he, was present? Here, I was not present, but I saw the video while I was abroad. And he made the presentation on behalf of the applicant of the changes to the urban jock handle and the 45-degree angle, emphasizing that a big tractor trailer, 35 tractor trailer, will be, it will be enough room to maneuver. I have never seen an engineer from a town making a presentation on behalf of the applicant. I have attended plenty more meetings in Midtown for years, Red Bank, Asbury Park, Neptune, and I never saw an engineer presenting an application on behalf of the applicant.
I'd like to stipulate for the record that Mr. Fitzgerald did not present an application or present the plan on behalf of the applicant. I believe what Mr. Fitzgerald's testimony was, his response to the plan that was submitted at his direction and the changes that were made because he required them.
It's understood.
And finally, Mr. Higgins, he mentioned that the grading is two feet and above. When I repeatedly asked the engineer for the exact number of feet, he mentioned that was about seven feet. That is huge. So say two and above, he just trying to paint a better picture than just say seven feet of grading when we're talking about all that, such a huge piece of property, and you have to...
Ms. Hanu, are you aware that the ordinance requires a variance when there's a grade change of two feet or above?
Yeah.
So wouldn't that be accurate in describing the type of variance that's needed by quoting the variance itself?
Yeah.
Okay.
But the reality is more accurate. Also, one more thing, he compared how he said, and he looked like it was scripted by an attorney when he said that if we go to an appeal, we are going to see, you're the, this applicant that is in, look at more, when we were talking about that he had agreed to go and walk the site and then he changed his mind or he backed up from that offer because he feel we are scrutinizing more this applicant and he compare with other applicants. Martelli Builders, who are the last two applicants, and Toll Brothers on West Park Avenue, and Toll Brothers for the Engler, those are much smaller developments. The amount of cheese, they don't, they are not connected, they have got 5,000 trees. So...
I have to object that this applicant, there's nothing on the record to that effect. And comparing this to other applications at this point is public comment as to this application.
I do have, I do have, I made an Oprah request through David Winner, through the town, to give me the...
Through the chair. One here, please.
I made an Oprah request to have the, what was approved by Toll Brothers and what was approved to Martelli. So I do have in writing the documentation and I'm making that statement based on that. So everything I say is based on facts and documentation and firsthand knowledge. That's what I watermark those videos and I wanted to put it on the video of the site. James, can I put the drone video? No, I just wanna run the video of the site. It's just five minutes.
The video of what?
The drone video that I did of the site of the proposed development, the actual drone video.
I'm not sure I understand.
I did a footage of the actual, the condition of the site. I did one in February.
Do you have anything about me?
Okay. Okay, I do have it in my computer. I'm gonna run it to my computer because I do have it. I did a drone footage in February or March. I did one in April, in May, and in June.
A drone footage? Is that what you're saying?
A drone footage. I've been documenting...
The operator of the drone here to testify?
I've been with the operator and James. My son has two licenses, a mature license and a professional license. And I was with him and I walked the site when we did because I wanted documented the condition of the site to show...
Excuse me, Ms., we're gonna take a little break here, but I would like to ask you, you're trying to, you're saying that you have a video of you walking the property? Is that what you're saying?
No, I didn't walk the property. I was on the library side because I know that those fake signs that says "No trespassing," nobody had a permit for it. But I did have a video that I would like to show of the entire property.
Well, if we take a little break, we'll take a look at your video.
Thank you.
All right, there may be an objection to your video.
How much time?
Five minutes.
It is five minutes.
Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to begin the proceedings again. Proceed.
It's only one minute and 56 seconds long.
If I could ask that you just take roll call, please, since we're back on the record.
Roll.
Mr. Buridi?
Here.
Dr. DeBenedetto?
Here.
Mr. Defilia?
Here.
Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Ms. Close?
Here.
Mr. Siano?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Chairman Borelli?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, the applicant objects to the presentation of this exhibit for several reasons, the most important being with regard to the relevance. An aerial view of the subject site as it exists today is not relevant with... That was because I asked Ms. Hanu to not put it up until such time as the board made a ruling, and I think that was just a screen saver on the computer.
Okay.
With regard to the relevance as to the applicant's compliance with the zoning ordinance. We're all familiar, I don't wanna take any more time to authenticate the drone video. It is now 9:47 in our 11th hearing on this matter. It appears that while not all of the people speaking are doing so, there seems to be, that there is some grandstanding and delay tactics being presented to you. And I'd ask that the board attorney said at first, it's the beginning of the hearing, and at the last meeting that you were going to not allow repetitive comments and limit the comments to relevant comments only. As a courtesy, considering that we took up the first nine hearings, I have not put many objections on the record, but I can say in the interest of getting this done and keeping this from being filibustered into another 11 hearings, I'm going to continually object as anything is said or introduced that is not relevant to what's the board's consideration or if it has been repeated.
It's only, Chairman, it's only a minute 56 seconds long, so less than two minutes, and it's relevant because it shows the site in its beautiful condition. We've been hearing that these trees are dead, dying of disease, that there is ticks and whatever...
The board can take judicial notice.
I've been walking on that site and nothing happened to me. It's a minute 56 seconds. Please allow to show.
How many seconds?
One 56 seconds, so one minute 56 seconds.
But it is outside the purview of the board regarding the treaty.
The beauty of the existing site is not relevant to anything the board has to determine.
I have to sustain it.
But it contradicts the statements from Mr. Panik that says that all the trees are dead, dying of disease. This I've been documented, in case we go to court, since February...
Man, we're not going to see the drone film. We're not gonna see the drone film.
That's fine.
Thank you very much.
I'm also curious about the drone film. Mr. Chair, I'd ask you to remind...
We can't have comments from the audience which is outside the purview of this board to look at that. It has nothing to do with the ordinance, ma'am.
No.
No.
She's not recognized.
I would say about...
No.
No. I thought Mr. Bay. No? Mr. Bay's not available?
I'm good. I'm good.
Are you up next, Mr. Bay? Sure. I'll be one minute.
This afternoon, September 9th, the...
I need your name and address for the record.
Raise your, would you raise your right hand? Stand and raise your right hand, please. Stand if you can. Do you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So off you go. Full name and your residence, please.
Jim Bay, dated 30...
How do you spell Bay?
Spell your name, please.
Mr. Bay, use the microphone, please.
Okay, this afternoon, Mr. Fitzgerald produced this. He reminds us, the developer, his only consideration, he doesn't meet the ordinance's safety. So go to the second slide, and here are some considerations. We'll take a look here at the ordinance. And the customer residential traffic should be separated from delivery.
I have to object, this was already put on the record by a prior witness. I'd ask that this witness states his name.
Second one is the ordinance, line safety, blockers. Third, urban jock handle safety. Fourth, traffic safety. Do you have a current traffic study?
Mr. Chair, I have to...
Again, this is also repetitive.
The board has absolutely, had not had any control over the presentation of the witnesses from the public. There were rules that were set up. We followed those rules. I'd ask you to enforce them as it relates to the public.
Okay, here's a copy of the ordinance which says separation. This is the...
Again, Mr. Chair, please ask...
already been pined down by others. You can just say you agree with Mr....
Okay, historically in the town center, the ordinance, with a town center phenomenon, they would have separated the traffic. And this is where John Duffy was reminding us, he had a consideration for the town center. And I'm just saying that if you had a town center historically, it would have had separated traffic, and that would be where the separation would have come from, that concept. Going to the next slide. Truck access turning at the El House and Turning Point near Deal Road. Are K-10s required for truck access and garbage removal? Yes. Back to the ordinance for delivery and customer traffic in the Turning Point in the El House, that would be inconsistent with the ordinance, because the trucks and the customers would not be in the same location with the garbage trucks, because the ordinance precludes it. Safety concerns, the fire trucks, can they access the hotel on the northeast?
I have to object, that was already put on the record by Ms. Hanouk.
As she is correct, thank you, I appreciate that. And the fire truck and delivery traffic egress, which we find on slide 61 and on slide 62, and again, the ordinance says separation of delivery and customer traffic.
Mr. Chair, I respectfully request that the applicant get the additional time at the end of this hearing past 11 o'clock for the same amount of time that these repetitive questions are being asked.
Mr. Bay, I'm gonna ask you to please refrain from asking questions that have already been touched upon by your predecessors. Please.
Yes, thank you.
I object to the, I certainly hope Mr. Bay isn't intending on playing a private... I absolutely object and ask that that be...
All right, buffers is no, so let's go into, let's go into... The Jim Higgins on March 3rd, reference, there is clearly no hardship to not have buffers. So Mr. Higgins, March 3rd, page 3, said the berm's exist in the ordinance.
I have to place an objection. We have the, we have an objector now taking up the time of the applicant and the board, reiterating prior testimony. If Mr. Bay has a comment about the application...
I'd love to hear your comment, Mr. Bay.
No one has spoken before of Mr. Higgins making a statement regarding, there is clearly no hardship from the developer...
Mr. Bay, you repeat yourself.
Again, if Mr. Bay wants to comment as to the proofs that were or were not met with regard to this application, he's welcome to. He's not entitled to reiterate prior statements. He had an opportunity to question Mr. Higgins when he made those statements, when the public hearing was over.
Do you have an opinion on Mr. Higgins' statements, Mr. Bay?
My opinion is, he is correct that the applicant has no...
It's only... Now, Mr. Bay.
That the applicant has no hardship, and therefore the buffer should be put back in place. On the Deal Road, the berm's on, by the library, the berm's on the north side where the condos are being built, in the wetland zone and where the hotel is. I agree with Mr. Higgins that there is no hardship, and therefore the berm should be put back.
Thank you for your opinion.
Next slide? No, or yes? Yes. Next slide. This is Mrs. Borelli's backyard. She backs up to Deal Road, and on the opposite side of Deal Road is the dumpster that they mentioned has a brick surround.
Mr. Bay, what's her address and lot and block, please? I'm asking you, Mr. Bay.
Not a clue.
You're, Mr. Bay, you're, Mr. Chair, the witness is presenting evidence, I'm asking him with regard to that.
Would you answer her, please, Mr. Bay?
She's standing right behind us. She is the one that has the placards on her fence as you drive down Deal Road, she's the one with the signs there on her fence.
Could you just state your name and address, please?
My name is Angela Manjoe Borelli, and I live at 7 Marissa Court, Ocean Meadows, in Ocean Township. That is my backyard.
Okay.
And then putting the dumpsters 51 feet from the opposite curb, that is a vehicle there, the dumpster would be somewhere over there, 51 feet from the curb. The ordinance says separate dribbly traffic from customer traffic, and also says put a berm on Deal Road. And from her backyard, you'll be able to see, as Mrs. Crimco pointed out, it will be a brick something facade, so you can't see the lower portion of the dumpster, but maybe the upper. This is what, from Mrs. Borelli's house, the dumpster is 51 feet from the curb across the road.
Mr. Bay, do you have any maps to scale that show the location of the dumpster in relation to the backyard, in relation to where she would sit?
Can you give us the maps? You have them, they're on, you have the full four-foot maps, and you can show all those maps. It's the standard four-foot maps. You've seen them all, you've got them up there. So she is, as you've seen, placards on hers, and this can be directly across 10 feet from her, and this is where the dumpster would be, 51 feet from her across, all right.
Mr. Chair, I have to object with regard to him playing...
Mr. Bay, I don't see the relevance of the video.
Next.
It is, it is Mr. Bay's opinion that it's 51 feet and that there's a negative impact on behalf of another neighbor. Is there anything new, Mr. Bay?
This is the engineer referencing his compliance or non-compliance.
I have to object, Mr. Chair.
Please stop the video, Mr. Bay, immediately, thank you.
And I'd have to object, it's with regard to the dumpster and the buffers. Again, it was not only stated by other witnesses, it was stated by this witness. So I'd ask, if you please, the board chair would ask it to please move to new issues.
Mr. Bay, would you please move along?
This would have been the engineer saying...
I have to...
But what, Mr. Bay?
Makes sense on the north and they make sense on Deal Road.
Mr. Bay, you're here to give your opinion and your comments about this proposed development, but you're presenting evidence about what? So I'm not gonna get into a debate with you, but I'd like you to stop referring to these videos.
All right, this is the reference to the variances. The variance is requesting on Highway 35, no berm. The variance is not requesting a variance for berm's on Deal. Now they can switch this.
Mr. Chair, if Mr. Bay has comments about the proofs provided for the variances, I'd ask him to offer them. I would ask him not to take up your time and mine relisting the variances that have been gone over over the last 11 meetings.
How do you, what do you recommend regarding, you did not ask for a variance for where the Deal, the library, or the North Berms? What do you recommend?
Mr. Chair, this is his opportunity to offer comments to the board, not to the applicant witness, not the applicant's attorney.
Just give your opinion, please, and don't argue with the attorney for the applicant.
Mr. Bay, if it's your, if it's your comment that you don't believe that the applicant properly applied for a variance, you can state that, period.
Thank you. Here is the reference that only if they require a variance relief can the board impose conditions.
Again, I'd ask that Mr. Bay not be permitted to present prior testimony in this hearing. If he has comments for the board, I'd ask the chair to ask him to state them.
Please, Mr. Bay, would you just restrict your commentary to your own personal thoughts?
Thank you. Regarding the berm's...
Mr. Bay.
Nine and 10, eight, nine on the...
Yeah, Mr. Bay. Hold on. You keep ignoring me, Mr. Bay.
Very good, thank you.
Don't ignore me again, or else I'm just gonna, like, go to the next witness, okay? So that we understand each other, sir. All right, thank you. Proceed.
The basins eight and nine were near the stoplight.
It's my...
Basins eight and nine are, this would be part of basin eight, this would be the other part of basin eight, this would be the other part of basin eight, this would be the basin nine, these are bioretention basins.
Again, Mr. Bay is taking a time to walk through the plans. If he has a comment with regard to the plan, I'd ask him for it.
You directed us to where these basins are. What is your comment, sir?
Because they are bioretention basins, and they are not a 72-hour drainage type basin, they will create a saturation and flood basements potentially on Marissa Court, Cole's Field. That's the point. They're not a 72-hour drain basin, they're a bioretention. I believe they're a saturation phenomenon.
Okay. Glad to hear your commentary.
This is the reference to her cutting down the trees and...
Again, I object to going back with regard to prior hearings.
And we're not discussing the trees, ma'am.
This is reference, the obligation to demonstrate the welfare of the town, and she says, only and this, I place an objection, he's repeating commentary that I offer on behalf of the applicant's case. She is correct.
Mr. Bay, I'm gonna tell you right now, one more time, one more time, and that's the end, okay? Give me your opinion. What's bothering you about this application? What's wrong with it?
They're not complying with the ordinance.
You can stand here all day and tell me a million things, go ahead.
My opinion is that they are not complying with the ordinance to separate traffic, they are not complying with the ordinance to have a berm on Deal Road by the library and on 35. If we could go to the urban jug handle safety.
I believe that this was discussed at length by other objectors, and if Mr. Bay wants to agree with their statements, I'd ask him to state so, we're offering the opinion.
I instructed Mr. Bay about that previously.
On her vein there, if I play this, she is correct, this will be a reiteration of the urban jug handle safety, yes. This is, again, the reiteration of Maria asking for the urban jug handle safety.
Mr. Bay, again, he's now summarizing the other witnesses.
Mr. Bay.
All right, this will be a separate one. Here, their previous testimony was there was 100 to 120 cars in the urban jug handle. We have Dan here, and he can correct me if I have any error. And reference was that not many cars, there's no need for a center island for safety, and the question is, if there was 1,051 cars there in the urban jug handle, would that be a relevant thing to safety? And this is where they testified...
I have to object, again, the applicant's case has rested, his opportunity to ask questions are done. This is his opportunity to provide testimony. If he's going to continue to filibuster, I would ask the chairman to please respond to the next...
Mr. Bay, do you have any commentary at all at this point, sir?
This is new. This is the mathematics inside the urban jug handle. This is, instead of the 110, 100 to 120 that they reference, this is the mathematics for 1,000, 1,051 cars in there. 931 would be in the west lane, 120 would be in the...
Mr. Bay, with all due respect, you're not giving your opinion or your feelings about this particular application. You're just...
Referring that there is a large volume of traffic, and there's a consideration of safety in the jug handle.
Again, we already talked about safety in the jug handle, sir.
But nobody referenced the volume of traffic.
Okay, and you just did.
Thank you.
So you're done with that?
When he showed the traffic, he showed 956, and there's 238 are in the internal capture. If we could show you that 238. Here's how the 238 flows from the retail to the restaurant, 84 from the restaurant to the 70. These are people who are either driving or walking in the internal capture. This is the phenomenon where they have a safety consideration inside...
We understand you have a safety consideration, Mr. Bay, please.
Again, he's now just exhibiting, I object, he's now just exhibiting the previous traffic study. I would ask if he has any comments with regard to the testimony or the presentation.
That 100 to 120 is not...
Mr. Bay, I ask you to excuse yourself, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Bay. The gentleman at the microphone.
Good evening, my name is Mary Patach. I reside on Roselle Avenue in Ocean. I am a township resident most of my life. To be clear, I don't work for the applicant, and where I have ever been treated to a dinner with the applicant, is my opinion that we have wasted enough of the township's time and taxpayer money on these approvals. The job creation and the newly generated taxes will help the community, our schools, roads, township services, and many parks of the township. The 75 acre tract was already reduced to 32 acres after the...
Sir, I think you're repeating previous opinion. You can refer to the person that spoke in that vein previously and say you agree with that person.
Okay, I agree with that person, but I must have not been here. I might, I apologize. I lived here in the area for my 42 years of life, there was never old trees. What you see today is weeds and dead and dying trees, I guess that was repeated. I think enough is enough. The site plan was modified 50 times over the past five years to satisfy the town. At what point are we residents asking to make it, to make, asking for too much with private property? It was, if I was the owner, I would be very upset. The last gentleman may not care about the lawsuits, but I do, it's my tax dollars being spent, and I for one am tired of it.
That's the reference to, sir.
Yep. Today, my paramount has fully complied with all local state regulations, and I just wanted to let my opinion be known that I do support this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
She has been paramount, not part of it.
Next, call the next person. Now this gentleman here, you're an attorney, sir, correct?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon.
And you represent whom?
My name is Herschel Rose, and I represent Jackie Wenzel.
Okay, sir.
And Mr. Rose, when were you retained, just for the record, because Ms. Wenzel has made comments on the record without representation up to this point.
I was actually, Ms. Wenzel signed the actual retainer agreement earlier today, but we made agreement last week. Okay, so I've reviewed the meeting minutes from the prior meetings, and reviewed several of the YouTube videos, so I'm somewhat familiar with the application. And we are also, my firm dates in East Namino's, is also the firm representing Ms. Wenzel and Mr. Yonkun's in the appeal of the underlying zoning ordinance here. And I'd like to begin by stating that the board should be careful in considering this application, as there is, as there is this ongoing appeal challenging...
I have to object, the appeal to the ordinance is irrelevant to this board's consideration. Mr. Rose certainly knows that, that this is an independent body, and the outcome of that appeal has absolutely nothing to do with this board's consideration.
It has to do with the consideration insofar as the board should know that on the, in the event that the underlying, the ordinance is ruled invalid, the, I just want the board to be aware of that in case...
Again, that has nothing to do with the board's consideration.
The board can't consider that. If for some reason the appellate division reverses, then the board, and if it's remanded, that's fine, but the board can't take that in consideration.
Okay. It's improper. Very well. I just wanted to state where I was coming from and stating my background in the case. As a second point, I'd like to point out that the board should act and investigate three very important issues that have been raised to some degree by members of the public but were not adequately investigated, and nor were adequate proofs placed on the records to support the variances in this application.
Is Mr. Rose offering testimony?
Yes, I am.
Okay, you're not allowed to offer testimony, Mr. Rose. As an attorney, you can present witnesses to offer testimony?
Offering testimony on behalf of Ms. Wenzel.
No, you can't, you're not testifying. So do you have a witness that's going to make that presentation?
Yes, Ms. Wenzel is here, and she's available to make any presentation necessary. What I'm advocating for is Ms. Wenzel's, I'm stating her opinions and beliefs as to this application. That's why I'm here.
And again, I don't believe that the attorney can speak on behalf of Ms. Wenzel. As I understand, I mean, it's the land use law, if an app, if an objector or if a witness is represented by counsel, they're not allowed to speak to the board, they can only speak through their attorney, meaning through questions and answers as a sworn witness. I don't believe that an attorney can come up and offer his second-hand interpretation of what Ms. Wenzel's opinions are. So if Ms. Wenzel has opinions, and the attorney... So if Ms. Wenzel has opinions, and the attorney would like to ask for those opinions through a question and answer through sworn testimony, that would be appropriate, provided, of course, those questions and answers are not with regard to items that have already been testified to.
Sustained, then.
Okay, very well. I'd like to call up Ms. Jackie Wenzel. Please, sorry, sorry, yeah?
You promised to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so I hope you got it.
I do.
Okay. Ms. Wenzel, what do you believe that the board needs to further investigate with regards to the traffic concerns of the site?
Safety issues?
Traffic and safety issues.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think we have not, when the traffic expert was here, we have not had a simulation of the, of the traffic, which during the hearings of Stockton Shock, there was a traffic simulation, and it's very difficult...
I have to object with regard to reference to a prior application. I'd also have to object with regard to her indication of what should or should not be done. If she has an opinion as to the traffic that was presented, and it's different from an opinion that's already been offered, then I would ask the chair to solicit that. But repeating testimony or arguing what other evidence should have been presented is not within her purview. She either, the board has to make a decision as to whether or not the proofs were met.
With all due respect, that is what Ms. Wenzel is testifying to, she's testifying to the inadequacy of the proofs presented.
And what's the next one?
Well, I just would like to recommend that the planning board, I guess, request a traffic, you know, to see that, to see a simulation, sorry, that before a decision is made, that traffic simulation is done. I just think it's very difficult with all the numbers that have been thrown out for the, for all of us who don't traffic, you know, study, that any layman can see then what actually is going on, because it is a concern. There, there's also, the traffic expert did not do an accident study. And I have my own inquiries into that now, but it hasn't come back in time for this meeting. We had thought originally the meeting was going to be later this month. So when the special meeting came up, they're not back yet, but there was never an accident study, and living here on Deal Road, there have been many accidents at the time when people make left turns, even though there's a sign that says no left turn, so I think that that's a concern.
I have to put an objection on the record as to the relevance with regard to existing traffic on Deal Road and accidents currently.
Okay, well, this site will certainly bring in more traffic, and I have many children that try and, there's an entrance to Joe Claye Park right across the street from my house, and many children take their bikes down from Logan Road, and then they wait in my driveway to make the turn.
I have to put an objection on the record, the current conditions without the proposed traffic expert, without the proposed traffic improvements with regard to the third lane, the 10-foot wide walkway, the lights and the other improvements, what's existing there today under current conditions is not relevant to what may or may not happen in the future.
Well, it is, it is a concern.
Ms. Wenzel, just please testify to what you think the proposed plan will do to change traffic in the area, and whether you think this will be a detriment or a benefit to the community.
I think it will be a detriment to the community because I know that it will bring more traffic, Chick-fil-A certainly will bring more traffic, certainly. At the same time of the day, when we have a great amount...
Mr. Chair, please instruct the witness, while I'm putting an objection on the record, she cannot speak over me, she has to allow me to put that objection on the record and have you rule on it.
Right.
Again, the objection is with regard to the introduction of additional traffic, as we discussed prior, has been indicated by your attorney, your board, and your board engineer. The existing traffic conditions and the amount of traffic is not for the purview of this board.
Correct. I sustain the objection.
How, how does, I mean, the traffic has, the traffic from this site has to go through our town. If you're ignoring that, how can we as a community ignore that? Okay, as a comment, I don't think as a community we can ignore the extra traffic. I may not be able to speak about it here today, but it is, as a planning board, I'm sure you understand there is going to be traffic, or Mr. Scarry wouldn't be interested in this space. I also wanted to mention that there are options, you know, as has been said before, for you not to feel pressured by the lawsuit, we all feel that way. And I know I'm repeating something that's been said, so forgive me. But what I'd like to say is that I have been thinking of ways that we could come to some kind of compromise.
I have to object, this is not a, this is not an opportunity for negotiation.
Correct.
If there are comments with regard to the applicant's compliance with the ordinance and the relevant matters that are part of the board's consideration, I'd ask the board chair to encourage that comment.
But there are many things that are not in compliance with the ordinance.
So, Mr. Rose, could you direct your witness to, to give her opinion as to what's troubling her?
New comments.
New comments, that have not been touched upon before.
Ms. Wenzel, you testified that there are, that you believe that there will be problems with this application as regards to traffic, and we've heard about this before. And we value that testimony. One thing I'd like to ask you is, what is your opinion as to the impact that this application, this development will have on the environmental, the environment around the...
Well, it will change our, our way of life here, because we have, it's a very gentile corner right now, and it's going to be completely destroyed.
Again, that's not relevant to what this board is here for, unfortunately, because the ordinance has been passed, and we have to examine whether or not this application is within the parameters of what's required by the ordinance. The ordinance doesn't really address environmental concerns.
Well, to clarify, in the context of the application, there has to be compliance with the ordinance. If there are any new comments about noncompliance with the ordinance, that can be considered. And again, if you've heard other people comment on it, you can say you agree with it.
Vise for the ordinance, yes, but we're also testifying to the positive and negative impact that this proposed site will have on the community.
And respectfully, the positive and negative impact is only with regard to the variances that are being sought, not for the development generally. The only time that the applicant is required to show that the general welfare, general welfare is being promoted is only in the context of the variance relief being sought. There are no variants being, no variance relief being sought with regard to the traffic, with regard to the wetlands, with regard to anything related to the environmental impact report. So the variances are with regard to change of grade, with regard to location of a sign, with regard to number of landscape zones, a couple of items like that where there's been ample testimony.
There's also variances with regard to parking?
No, there's not.
With regards to...
No, there's not.
I believe I have any minutes?
There is a request of variance along Route 35.
The variance with regard to, the technical variance with regard to the berm along Route 35, but again, all of that has to do with aesthetics, there are no variances related to the environment.
On the site line, I read variance for providing more than 20 consecutive parking spaces in a row, or four pit spaces.
Correct, and there was ample testimony in that regard, but I'm not going to repeat at length at this point. But again, that is not relevant to environmental concerns.
It was relevant with regards to traffic.
Respectfully, Mr. Chair, parking is not relevant to traffic.
Well, there's an issue of parking capacity, and the question could be whether or not there's been full compliance with the ordinance.
We are in full compliance with parking capacity.
Correct.
I'd also like to introduce a piece of evidence, which I've shown to Ms. Krimko prior to my testimony, or Ms. Wenzel's testimony here, entitled memorandum.
And again, I have to object, because it's not part of the board's consideration. What Mr. Rose is trying to introduce are the DEP's comments to our application with regard to SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Ordinance. We've already committed to full compliance with all outside agency approvals. There are strict requirements there. We are now engaging in our Phase 3 cultural resource study in order to satisfy SHPO. What the state requires with regard to the archaeological aspects is outside of the scope of this board's consideration. We have agreed we will comply, we are seeking no relief from the state or this board with regard to the State Historic Preservation requirements.
While it is within the purview of the State Historic Preservation Office to review the application with regards to compliance, one of the purposes of zoning set forth in, I'm just saying, 4055.
I will stipulate that we are not furthering, we are not claiming to further that purpose of zoning. That our plan has earned, that we've already had ample testimony as to all of the other purposes of zoning that we were furthering.
And as a point, we believe that by failing to further this purpose of zoning, this could in next...
I'd like to ask your witnesses, I can't ask you questions, I'd like to ask Ms. Wenzel, how if we're fully compliant with the state regulatory requirements with regard to historic sites, how are failing to meet that purpose?
I will ask Ms. Wenzel.
Well, no, I just asked Ms. Wenzel.
Okay, Ms. Wenzel?
How, how are you complying?
We have agreed that we will meet each and every state regulatory requirement as it relates to historic sites. We're not seeking any waivers, variances, or otherwise from the state requirements. So if we are fully compliant with the state regulations and the state agency that has jurisdiction over this, how is that not furthering the purpose of the state in its land use law?
You'll be preserving the space that is historic?
Again, what I indicated was, there is no requirement by the state or otherwise for preservation of the space. There's requirements for when you have an historic site, when you can develop it, and what you need to do and prove in order to develop it. And we are stipulating that we are fully complying with the state regulations.
Ms. Wenzel, do you believe that the board has done an adequate job of investigating the historical significance of this area despite the fact that there is an application by the developer before the Historic Preservation Office?
Well, I'd like to recommend, and I don't know if it's been done yet, so you can tell me if this has. I really do think there should be a site visit, I think that the board should walk the site. I think if it's, if that is arranged, I'd like to request that some of the residents that are interested in walking the site can walk with you. I have a great feeling of insincerity from Mr. Panic, who said that they were dead, dying, and diseased trees. Because I have walked that land, and I have spent a lot of time in that land. And when I met Mr. Panic, when he was spray painting the trees, he told me...
I have to object to Ms. Wenzel indicating what was said to her.
Well, no, he was the traffic expert, and I...
Again, any questions or statements should have been asked at the time that he appeared here, she, it is hearsay for her to indicate what he said to her.
No, because I couldn't determine what he said at the time to specifically be insincere, however, I'd like to...
Ms. Wenzel, you're speaking of Mr. Panic, you said?
Yes, I met Mr. Panic when he was spray painting the trees, and Mr. Panic, I said to him, "How are you spray painting these trees? This application has been approved by our applicant board."
I object, Mr. Chair.
I sustain...
Ms. Wenzel, please direct your comments to your opinion of the things you're going to say.
Well, it's my opinion that Mr. Panic is not truthful. And the reason is, he told me that...
I have to object, Mr. Chair.
He said the spray paint on the trees...
Sustained.
Please only say...
Okay. It was my, it was my understanding from a conversation that it was...
I have to object for referencing a prior conversation.
It was, it was spray paint that would come off with the rain, not for me to get upset. They were just doing an inventory, and this is spray paint that will come off in the rain, and that was six months ago.
May I object and ask for the relevance?
Ms. Wenzel, do you believe that the underlying ordinance supporting this application is spot zoned?
I, I have to object...
I sustain, we're not here...
If, if, if Ms. Wenzel wants to challenge spot zoning, she could do it in a court, it's not appropriate here.
That's correct.
Even though all zoning was...
I have to object...
I won't call it spot zoning, but it was...
Mr. Chair, I'd ask you to direct the witness to stop speaking when I'm placing an objection on the record. Because what, Mr. Chair, because what she is saying is not appropriate for the board.
Can we move to the next question? Mr. Rose, I believe your name is...
Ms. Wenzel, do you have a chance to review the environmental impact statement provided by the developer in this application? Save it for the record, please.
No.
And lastly, do you believe that this development provides adequate open space for the enjoyment of the public?
No, and I don't believe that this development will enhance our community in any way. It is not necessary, it's not a benefit to our community. There is, I, I feel that as a planning board and as a, you know, council making these decisions, that we should give some incentives to developers to redevelop a lot of vacant space that's on 35, that's a real eyesore, and I understand...
I believe this was already stated.
By who?
By numerous applicants, I think, by name, I don't know, but it...
Well, I don't, I didn't remember hearing anyone say that tonight.
Ms. Hanud said the same exact thing earlier, the redevelopment of existing vacant sites.
Correct.
I have one last statement to make for the planning board, I guess they may not be aware of this, that directly across the street at Old Orchard Plaza, that's, that project, that land is for sale. There's...
I have to object to the relevance...
Commercial for this project could be moved across the street without getting a tree down.
As a last point, I'd just like to attempt to reintroduce this piece of evidence I was talking about before, since I did not hear a ruling from the board. A memorandum dated June 13th from the State of New Jersey Natural Historic Resources Historic Preservation Office, title Monument County Ocean Township, Ocean Town Center, referencing HBO Project 1622714.
Mr. Rose, you'd agree that that is the review letter from SHPO with regard to the pending application before the state agency?
Yes.
Again, I reiterate my objection that it's not relevant to the board's consideration.
We believe that it is relevant, and that it, in addition to showing the consideration that's going forward, it shows the background information as to the site, as to its historic Native American heritage, and as to the importance to the, importance to the members of the public.
I'll happily submit copies of all of the review, they're all public record, all of the review letters, so you can take judicial notice of everything that Mr. Rose just said.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes, I, I think we've had more than enough tonight personally, and I'd like to make a motion to potentially adjourn and talk about what's next.
Will somebody second?
Well, before you do that, Mr. Chair, please remember that there's a timeframe in which this board has to render a decision. And each time this application is adjourned, the applicant has consented to extend that time. I believe that it's now 10:30, we've wasted at least an hour of this night with me having to place objections to a relevant and repetitive testimony. I would again ask that we make an attempt to conclude the public portion of this hearing in the hopes that we can get to a vote tonight.
Up to the board members.
I, I would have to say that so far, the public has not brought up any new comments. It's been very repetitive, I'm really, really disappointed that they have not brought up any new comments. And I do side with Ms. Krimko that we need to move this proceedings along. I really feel that you guys are filibustering, and it's not fair to this board at all. Please, please keep your comments relevant to the project. And stop repeating comments over and over and over.
I'd still like to make a motion to see you, but, Mr. Chair, we'd have to rule whether or not we're going to continue with comments, that's the first step.
I see.
Now, Mrs. Peller, are you here? The time is not up, it's not 11 o'clock.
Sir, we're talking, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, there was a request that we stop comments, but the decision has to be made whether or not we continue or not, so that's...
There was a motion.
There was a motion that, you need a second, maybe.
Well, as far...
There's a second of the motion.
What? Is there a second of the motion to adjourn?
No, no, to, to stop comments, not to adjourn.
For the...
For the, ask for the motion to be clarified or repeated, please.
I would like to make a motion that we suspend comments for tonight to be continued at a later date, and that we talk about what in the next process at that later date, what that looks like, and...
I can, I can put on the record...
I can, I can put on the record that the applicant, if the board decides to stop at 10:30, before we even reach the end of the hearing time, that was allotted to us at the beginning of the hearing, and that's not even including the filibustering as well as the private session, I can assure you that the applicant will not stipulate to extend the time. And should the board decide to adjourn this without taking the vote tonight, without giving the applicant the opportunity to provide closing arguments, we will be in a position to be able to seek a default approval.
So now, now procedurally, at the point of seeing if there's a second to the motion. Is there a second? If there's no second, then this can't be considered. So procedurally, Mr. Chairman, that would mean unless there's a request for adjournment for a few minutes, that we continue with comments.
All right.
Does that also mean that at 11 o'clock we're stopping?
Yeah, 11 o'clock. Is that fair enough?
Again, when 11 o'clock comes, and the board asks whether or not we would be willing to adjourn it...
She's essentially holding us hostage. So it's either we make the decision now, or we don't. Like, let's just call it fate is fate.
I would like to close the public comment by 11 o'clock. I would be like to make the motion...
Yeah, I'm also, just to be clear, there were some things that were said in the eight to 10 hours of comments, there were like three or four things that were said that I would like to address at some point.
Okay, well, a couple of things. And if I, if I may, with regard to Mr. Duffy, I'm holding no one hostage, I'm merely saying I'd like the opportunity to...
That's your opinion, it's fine.
It's not an opinion. I'm offering to the board that I'm holding no one hostage, I'm indicating that at 10:30, at 10:30, I'm not willing to extend the time. And when you said at 11, I said, "Let's see what happens at 11, how far we get along." Number one, number two, the applicant has no intention of presenting any new witnesses. When the public portion is done, the applicant's intention is to present a closing argument and expect the board to deliberate and vote. So if, if, I believe, Mr. Weinstein, the question you're asking me is to address it, we're not presenting any more witnesses at this point.
Right, but the purpose of getting the comments is to also let us hear some things that people are bringing up that we might want to talk about.
100%, agree.
Right. And then the other thing that I'm a little bit confused about...
Mr. Weinstein? Let's continue at 11 o'clock.
Okay, great.
At 11 o'clock, we'll readdress the issue. Let's continue. Recognizing that next week...
Yeah. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, and thank you very much. Am I to be sworn in?
Yes, raise your right hand, please. From tell the truth, hold truth, and that's about the truth, so forget it.
I will affirm to that, yes, thank you. I'm sorry, 1216 Walnut Avenue, Ocean Township, Wanamasa section. Thank you, Wanamasa. David Weiner, W E I N E R. You're quite right. It's my opinion that there should be no vote on this matter tonight. This meeting has been sown with confusion due to a purported mistake by the applicant's attorney, by her own admission, earlier tonight. The residents who could not be here may...
Mr. Chair, I have to object, there was a jurisdictional objection with regard to the notice that should have been made at the beginning of the hearing. At this point, this is public comment on the application, not procedural or jurisdictional challenges.
Well, for a moment, we understand the objection, it's clear, and now we can just move on to comments on the application.
With all due respect, since I didn't finish, could you tell me what my objection was, that you understand?
I believe that the objection, he was referring to, was the objection that I made, that it's inappropriate to raise jurisdictional issues at the end of the hearing. And again, Mr. Chair, I'm seeking if you ask the witness to please offer comment as to the substance of the application.
In what matter could I have offered them in the beginning when I was not allowed to speak? This, until, it was not my turn until now. How, in what form, in what form was I allowed to make an objection at the beginning of the hearing? I'm asking through the chair, to the attorney.
Proceed...
How would I have made an objection in the beginning of the meeting when I was not allowed to speak?
And I can answer that prior, I believe that Ms. Hamud, as well as Jackie, have placed their procedural objections by approaching either Ron Kirk or Sandy Brown at the beginning of the hearing, and those issues were raised on the record and discussed.
And I chose not to...
My only comment was, I understand what your objection is, and it's, it's recorded. We understand you object for jurisdictional reasons, and so I'm just suggesting that we can move on.
I object to the applicant's attorney being allowed to introduce documents tonight that the public has not been allowed to see in order to make comments about them. They were introduced earlier this evening, and we have not been allowed to see them. So that's another reason I would say that there should be no vote tonight, because of that process that's inappropriate. I congratulate Ms. Krimko for doing an excellent job for her client. I told her, we've spoken personally, I think she's a wonderful attorney, and I think she's doing an excellent job for her client, but she's not doing an excellent job for this township. If the applicant's expert claimed that there were a great number of trees, how was it that were not, that were dead and dying? How was a drone not allowed to be introduced? It's my opinion that it should have been allowed to be introduced to show that they were not dead and dying. With all due respect, I ask the chair, have you ever overruled any objection that Ms. Krimko has made?
Yes.
I've only seen, with all due respect, have you ever overruled one?
Once or twice.
Once or twice, in 11 hearings? 11 years? And just, just an observation, interesting, council has been allowed to testify, she's been allowed to argue with the public. That is not appropriate. I heard no objection to that here.
Mr. Chair, I have to place an objection on the record.
Let's see where this goes.
Mr. Weiner may have complaints about me personally and the way that I...
No, man, not personally.
And to the board, but again, that's not relevant to the substance of the application, and I'd ask you to direct him to offer his public comments, particularly considering it's been made very clear that the board wants to wrap this up at 11 p.m. tonight.
The comportment and behavior of council is definitely applicable to this hearing. It influences the hearing, it influences the outcome of your vote. It is definitely applicable. I'll move on. Witnesses should be allowed, in my opinion, to provide foundation before they make a comment, and they should not be cut off with objections that are always sustained. I also object, and with all due respect to the doctor, I object to township residents presenting their opinions as filibustering. I don't think they were filibustering. I think they were doing, they did a lot of work to prepare for this meeting, and they should have been allowed to make their presentations without being insulted for having done so. I'll end by saying this, there's an old expression, and I probably screwed it up, but you can't turn a pig's ear into a silk purse. If you allow this development to go through, you will be turning the silk purse of the beautiful, our beautiful 32 acres into a pig's rear. I would ask you not to do that. Thank you.
Again, how many times does it need to be said that clapping and laughter is disrespectful to either the person who's making the comments, or the board, or just a general process? Kindly, could you please be courteous? Thank you.
Could you give your name and address then?
Good evening, thank you. My name is Angela Manjo Morelli, and I live at 7 Marissa Court in the Ocean Meadows Development in Ocean Township. Probably more than anybody else in this room, I have the most to lose from this development. Because as you saw on the video, that was my backyard. Deal Road is my backyard, and this development will be my new backyard. What I would like to do is read excerpts from this article in a local Texas paper about the neighborhood effects of a Chick-fil-A restaurant.
I have to object, Mr. Chair. The Chick-fil-A is a permitted use that is not for the board's consideration.
Okay.
I'll sustain it.
Okay, well, as a retired teacher of 42 years, I can give you a very brief synopsis. Number one, a Chick-fil-A restaurant is on the par of an anchor supermarket in a development, in a mall. Number two, between the hours of 12 and 1...
Mr. Chair, again, respectfully, this is not a decision on a Chick-fil-A restaurant, it's a decision with regard to an overall site, and a Chick-fil-A restaurant or any fast food restaurant that may occupy that location is a permitted use.
Okay, then from now on, I'm just going to give you my, my opinion as a 35-year resident of Ocean Township. My backyard sits squarely on Deal Road, and I can unequivocally assure you from my kitchen window that traffic on Deal Road cannot tolerate any more than it already does. I can be your traffic expert because I look at it from morning till night. As I sat for the planning board meetings in Town Hall, I stared at the front wall with the sign saying, "Ocean Township is the community for gracious living." And I wondered what a Wawa, a Chick-fil-A, and an extended stay hotel have anything to do with gracious living. I really hoped to enjoy my retirement after my years of teaching at Long Branch High School. I really hoped to enjoy my retirement in this community. And now I'm scared to death. And why am I scared to death? Because I'm afraid my cellar's going to be flooded, and who do I call when that happens? I'm afraid that, that my backyard is going to be a development with constant 24-hour traffic, and I'm afraid that I'm going to lose the value in my home that I really, really worked, that my late husband and I worked many, many years to build. And that's what I'm afraid of. And I really hope that you consider that, because that comes from my heart. I don't have charts, I'm not an expert, I'm not an attorney, but I've worked really hard during my teaching career to build a home, and now all of a sudden, it looks like it's going to disappear. And I want, I just want to remind everybody, do you remember in the middle of the summer when we had that water main break on Route 35? Traffic was paralyzed, we were on our knees the entire day, and I can't imagine living like that from now on, because that's what it's going to be. And I really think we need to face that, that that's what it's going to be. I vehemently beg you to reconsider this proposal and to vote no deal on Deal.
Yes.
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Are you proud to tell the truth, hold truth, and that's about the truth, so I'll be good.
I do.
Name and address, please.
My name is Adam Weisberg, I live at 5 O'Tree Lane in Wayside. I'm not only just a property owner for 25 years, my business is on Route 35, so I'm 35 Malera. So I have a direct interest in giving my opinion on the evidence presented by the applicant. But before I start, I totally support what that woman just said. Okay, I think that is something that this board should take into account, is the immediate property values in the area. Now, as a property owner, excuse me, as a business owner, I am concerned about the traffic on Route 35, about people coming to my office to see me. 35, it's a nightmare at the intersection of Deal Road, as it is now. Now, one of the things that I do look at is the evidence that the applicant has presented. And I'm not going to repeat what other people said, but I am going to take a look at that. I do want to talk a little bit about that jug handle. One of the meetings, the traffic experts said that it was of no consequence when there was a truck going around, 53-foot truck going around and being stuck in the drug handle. And I asked at that meeting whether it's the curbing or not, he said it was of no consequence. I submit to this board that it is a consequence when there is an accident, and there's property damage, and there's a traffic backup very much like that last person just talked about. I think that is something that should be taken into account. But let's talk a little bit more about some of the things that were not brought up by any other commenter that I would like to bring up. And that has to do with the deer population. We're talking about clearing 32 acres of vegetation and trees.
Mr. Chair, at the place of objection, first of all, it's a misrepresentation, we're not clearing 32 acres. But putting that aside, there is no ordinance regulation with regard to the deer. This is a permitted use, or under the impermeable coverage...
Before you sustain that objection, let me address that objection.
And this has been brought up by numerous other witnesses.
Not the one I'm about to say, it hasn't. All right, now, let me, it is within this board's power to review how a project proposed by any applicant affects the surrounding community, and safety is part of that. And one of the things that has been, has been touched upon, but not has been really explored, is the deer population. The deer population is going to be displaced from this development. As a result, that deer population is going to go out into the rest of the neighborhoods, down into Interlake, through Allenhurst, West Allenhurst, and through the whole area. And the problem...
Unfortunately, Mr. Chair, this has been offered by numerous other witnesses up to this point.
Just, give me three seconds to get it through, okay? The bottom line is, you can't drive through Ocean Township from one end to the other without seeing the deer carcass on the road. It's a problem, it's a problem that affects the quality of life to the motoring public. And people say, "Oh, too bad about the deer." I say, "How about the motorist who's going to take, who's going to get hit in that accident, about his property damage and potential personal injury?" That is something that I think that this council, this board should take into account, is how is this project going to affect the surrounding area when it comes to the deer population? That's just a very, one point I want to pull up. The other thing is, I want to talk about the Wawa. All right, we're talking 24 hours of operation, noise pollution, light pollution, it's going to affect the area as far as gas vapors are concerned, benzines, that could affect population. Now, it's been said we have a lot of gas stations in town, and maybe this Wawa's going to have an adverse effect on the other, on the other gas stations in town. I don't know if that's something that this board can take into account. Sandy's saying no, but it's still, it's still out there. Listen, you guys don't park your common sense at the door when you're listening to this application. You have, you're all residents here, you all work here, you have to pay attention to what's going on in the surrounding community. And I'm really concerned about the other businesses in town that are going to suffer an adverse economic impact, there's only so much demand for the supply. The other thing I'm worried about is the hotel. In their application, they're putting a hotel, but is there any discussion, even though it may be a permitted use with the variances, is there any discussion on the economic support that the hotel is going to give to the town, or should I say, take from the town? Once Labor Day comes, is that hotel going to be able to support itself without becoming a burden?
Mr. Chair, again, I'm objecting to the fact that it's not relevant, it's a permitted use in the ordinance, and it's not within the purview of this board as to what uses can go here. The board looks at, did we meet the site plan ordinance requirements?
All right, so let's move on, let's, we'll give her that objection, all right? I'll withdraw that point, because it is common sense, I'm going to trust you all to use that. But let me ask you another question. The credibility of the applicant and its team is something that can be determined by this board when determining the application's project. In this particular case, the board may give little weight to any experts that are presented, and can rely on their own common sense if they find that that credibility may have been impeached. In other words, you can reject the entire testimony of any expert offered by the applicant. In this particular case, the applicant's experts are interested witnesses. Now, I don't have a problem with the applicant trying to make some money. He's looking to develop some land, he's a local guy, I think we can all support good business. What we can't support is good business at the expense of the entire community. And in this particular case, we have experts that are interested witnesses. One, sure, they're getting paid, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that. Two, they... Two, they've done a lot of hard work on this, and I think that a lot of people admire them for doing it, but their reputations are on the line. They're going to shade their testimony to support the applicant, and when our own experts that are working for the town has them scaled back projects, has them scaled back ideas, but then the public is not, is not given the opportunity to bring in their own experts, an example being the tree expert when Mr. Garcia was here at the last meeting. Mr. Garcia may have been a little bit of an off-color character.
Yeah, I'm here right now.
And he's there right now. And but Mr. Garcia definitely knew what he was talking about. That was a man with 40 years in the business, and he was licensed by the state of New Jersey, and he was not permitted to walk that property because the deeded owner was never contacted to give him permission. The deeded owner stopped and shopped, and they're represented by the attorney Pringle at Belmont. So the applicant, from what I understand, unless they have a power of attorney, does not have the right or the ability to give that tree expert access to the property. It is Pringle, Pringle's client, that's able to do that, and that is the problem here. That's, gives me a moment to pause, because in my opinion, when it comes to the dead and dying trees, there may be an economic value that's associated with that. And when the trees are so much part of the subject, and race expert, Mr. Garcia, is not given the opportunity to walk that property and inspect it himself, yet comes in here and demonstrates that he has more than just a general knowledge, that he has a specific expert knowledge about, about trees that can be offered to this board, gives me, in my opinion, a moment to pause. One of the other interesting things about the credibility of the experts' witnesses is just that this project was done by, from my understanding, Missouri Consultants, is that correct?
Mazer.
Mazer, excuse me, Mazer Consulting Engineers. Now, when I happened to be looking at the website of the Ocean Township Sewer Authority on July 21st, I noticed that they are professional appointee. So what I'm trying to figure out is, is that a professional appointee who yearly puts in a contract or a bid to do work for a municipality is now, is now the engineer behind a project such as the applicant. And although I'm not going to discuss the lawsuit, but we do know that if the applicant's is approved and the project goes on, that lawsuit goes away. This consulting firm is considered a hero, and when, and that's going to be taken, and that may be taken into account the next time they put in their application and they submit.
Well, I just want to clarify something. You're saying that Mazer is the engineering firm for the sewage authority?
No, I didn't say that. According to the website, I looked at it on July 21st, they are professional appointees for pre-qualified consulting engineers. They, as well as others, are listed.
What that is, the state was trying to stream on, can everyone hear me? Just want to be sure. Whenever you extend a sewer, or generate, create a development or propose a development that creates 8,000 gallons per day of sewage or more, you need what's called a treatment works approval. And what the state did to, they were having so much trouble trying to get engineering firms to submit applications that were worth reviewing one time and one time only. They actually made a preferred list of engineering firms with a successful record of preparing and prosecuting applications for treatment works, and those lists are kind of distributed.
And that makes a lot of sense, and at the end of the rainbow, there's fees for them to possibly earn.
Yeah, but the fee isn't based on you being on the list or not. You're on the list because you did a good job of an application, and the E P recognizes.
Right. But at the end of the day, we have a firm that is looking for money, or possibly looking for an opportunity to make money in the future, that are backing this project, actually birthing this project, that could end up resulting in a dismissal of a thorn of a lawsuit in Ocean Township's side, thereby raising their profile, and therefore making their credibility impeachable. It makes their credibility worth examining by this board. And if this board determines that is an issue, then the board can disregard their testimony and anyone they presented. As a matter of credibility, we've got guys here who are pushing this project on behalf of the applicant, yet they're sitting on the website as professional appointees for the sewer authority for the same town. My opinion, that is something worth debating for. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it is approximately 11 o'clock. I know that there were some general comments by board members as to where we proceed. Ms. Krimko indicated that around 11:00, we could have another-
May I have two, may I have two minutes to consult with my client, Mr. Chair? I agree.
Well, Ms. Krimko is having a dialogue with her client. If you are planning to make a comment, could you kindly raise your hand?
Yeah. Hello.
All right. Count this people, like laid hands, kind of hands.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, if I understand correctly from some representations reports, the board's pleasure to end at 11 o'clock. That was stated at the beginning, in light of the fact that we're at 11 o'clock, and there are numerous members of the public who have not had the opportunity to speak at no fault of their own, obviously, the applicant would consent to extend the time so we can move this to the next hearing without further notice.
All right, Ms. Krimko, I'm sorry, I was going to talk about the precise time. Did you have any-
Yeah, I was just going to ask you if there are any special hearing dates available so we could arrange that accordingly, and I would not have to renotice.
September 23rd is our next date. I would remind the, I would remind you that I did ask, that was back-to-school night, and the reason that we were having partially today's meeting was because of that, so.
I mean, just to speak pragmatically, with the number of people who raised their hands and very limited general opportunity to speak at a regular meeting, it would seem that it would behoove the public and the board to try to have another special meeting, which would not be on the 23rd. Now, certainly, in the past 11 hearings or so, there've been many times where we have scheduled this to continue at the next regular meeting, and then there has been special meetings set, which is exactly what happened last time, August 1st. So if I would understand you correctly, you would like to have this slated to continue on, at the regular meeting on the 23rd, but you're asking for a special meeting, and if one is found to be available through Mr. Kirk's efforts, then you will renotice. Is that fair to say?
That's correct.
All right. Mr. Kirk, do you have any comments on that?
You know, we're, we're two weeks away. I don't know necessarily, we can, we're trying, but I don't know if this would be able to happen prior to 23rd.
So-
So at this point-
So what can happen on the 23rd, if there is a, if there's a decision to have a special meeting-
It could be announced that night.
It could be announced without further notice at that time. Is that fair to say, Ms. Krimko?
Yes, it is. And so what I would ask is, the board carry this matter, the board's hearing of September 23rd, 2019, without further notice. It's my understanding that will be held in the municipal building, and it will be for the purpose of either allowing public comment for 50 minutes, that this application would be allotted, or to carry it to a new date. I don't believe there's any time in which we could potentially get a special hearing between now and the 23rd for which I could notice.
Absolutely.
So it would absolutely be after the 23rd if a special hearing were scheduled.
Yes, and you understand that the meeting would be at the municipal building, so there obviously would be restrictions-
Correct.
-numbers, so pragmatically, you're really not looking to have any testimony on the 23rd. You're just talking about procedure. I understand what you're saying, I just want to have that repeated so that members of the public and the board understand that, correct?
Right. And I certainly would not want to deprive Mr. Duffy from going to see his children's back to school or the opportunity to vote after sitting through now what will become 12 hearings on this matter. Thank you.
All right. Very good. So is there a motion to adjourn at this point?
Yes, I gladly make a motion. I second.
Vote call.
And before the vote, I would just ask Mr. Chair to confirm to the public that this is carried to the meeting of September 23rd, 2019, at Town Hall for the purpose of scheduling a new date, without further notice.
Okay, without further notice, this is carried to September 23rd at Town Hall.
Do it quick.
Yes.
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 Yes.